April 12, 2022 regular city council meeting to order. I now invite council members Orange to recite the pledge of allegiance. Everyone else please meet your microphones. Everyone turn off your videos while we display the banner and we'll give everyone a moment to do that.
Ready begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council members Orange. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 2028 regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you called in, we ask that you meet your device so as to not interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to meet their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phone in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Council members Orange.
Yeah.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Council member Alderks.
Here.
Council member McNeil.
Here.
Council member Manki. Council member Duer.
Here.
And deputy mayor Al Cabra.
Here.
Oh, council present.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines for all meeting attendees. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Meet your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom or your yellow card when you wish to speak and I will call on you. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Council member McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to pull from consent 22056 consider suspending the rules for recording council retreat.
I don't see a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody want to speak to the motion? Council member McNeil, do you want to chat a little bit about it?
Yeah, so I'm just wanted to pull the item from consent to have more further discussion. Are we going into the consent items now?
No, we will do that after the fact. And I guess it's just pulling from consent, not adding something. So we don't need a roll call vote for that, do we?
We do not.
Perfect, thank you. Um, all right. In that case, we are going to move on to presentations, reports and briefings. It looks like we have.
I'm trying to go. We're going to go to executive session first. There was an updated.
Perfect. Yes, we will now adjourn to executive session pursuant to RCW 42301101G to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment anticipated to last 30 minutes with action expected in open session.
All righty, I'll see you there.
See you there.
Councilmembers, aren't you there? All right, welcome back from executive session, everyone. I will entertain a motion.
I move to appoint candidate X as new city manager and I move to direct staff to enter into contract negotiations with this new city manager.
Councilmember McNeil.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by county or deputy mayor Al Cabra and a second from council member McNeil. If anyone would like to discuss. Raise your hand. All right, oh, councilmember Duer.
Just wanted to say, I think I speak for everyone when I say we're really excited to have a new city manager and no one is more excited than interim city manager Lenhart. So we're happy to relieve you hopefully shortly from that duty and thank you for your service. It's been a labor of love, we know that, so thanks.
Councilmember Zornz.
Yeah, I just want to second the thanks. Thank you, Erin, for holding us together. Could not have been done without you and I'm very excited for the people of Bothell to get to know this new candidates. I think that they will really appreciate the skill set that this person's bringing to our city.
And just so everybody watching knows, we're keeping the identity of the candidate under wraps and we'll keep that private until we have successfully negotiated a contract with said candidate. But once we get that piece done, we're really excited to share with you who they are. The really candidate X sounds pretty cool. They might just stick with it, you never know. All right, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Aldurks.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember Monke.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
And deputy mayor Al Cabra.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, clerk. All right, next up on our agenda, we have a proclamation for Autism Awareness Month and I believe we have a local business owner Jessica Drake here to accept.
Excuse me, mayor, we have the public engagement slide first.
Ah, okay.
Real quick, here we go.
Let's do that. All right, we have upcoming public engagement opportunities. Bothell has moved the state business licensing program as of April. Deputy City Clerk, do I, do I read all of this? Is that how we roll the whole thing or do we? All right, I'll do it. As of April 7th, 2022, the city's business license applications and renewals are administered by Washington State Department of Revenue. City licenses will appear as an endorsement of your state on your state business license. A SAW Secure Access Washington account will be needed to access the state website. Please visit the URL on your screen to learn more. Also, beautify and care for your streamside landscape. Join one or both upcoming natural yard care online workshops to learn how to use native plants and healthy soil to improve your streamside yard that also attract and protect wildlife. It's going to be on Wednesdays, April 3rd and April 20th at 7:00 PM. You can register, register at both la dot gov slash NYC. And we don't mean the city. All right, now, we're going to do a proclamation for Autism Awareness Month and if you would panel Jessica Drake in to accept. That would be great.
She should be on her way.
Perfect, coming down the hall. Whereas the CDC estimates one in 44 children has been identified with autism spectrum disorder ASD, including between 23,000 and 48,000 children living in Washington State. And whereas ASD is a lifelong condition affecting over 5.4 million adults in the United States, many needing ongoing services and support. And whereas autism knows no racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, educational, or lifestyle boundaries and affects many within the city of Bothell. And whereas we recognize that early diagnosis and treatment are essential to those affected by ASD and provide opportunity for those individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And whereas we reaffirm our dedication toward equitable and inclusive experiences in Bothell and support continued education, training, and resources. So every person has the opportunity to live full distinguished productive lives in their communities. And whereas we acknowledge that while progress has been made supporting those with ASD, we are only beginning to understand the challenges they face and dedicate this time to promote better understanding and response to autism. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, mayor of city of Bothell, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Bothell in honor of the achievements and contributions of those facing the challenges of autism and encourage all in our community to learn what more they can do to support individuals on the autism spectrum and their families. All right, you're up, Jessica.
I just want to say thank you for your time and attention and bringing awareness for the community about people that are autistic and just struggling for communication with others in this, in our society and community. And I just hope that we all are looking to help each other in our communities rather than condemn.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation on Ramadan and we have Shama Farouq here to accept. All right, recognizing the commencement of Ramadan, the Muslim holy month of fasting and spiritual renewal. Whereas Bothell has a thriving Muslim community whose members contribute to our city as doctors, nurses, teachers, small business owners, volunteers, among others. And whereas Ramadan is the holy month of fasting and spiritual renewal for Muslims worldwide and is the ninth month of the Islamic calendar year. And whereas Ramadan lasts 29 to 30 days based on the timing of the crescent moon. And whereas Muslims around the world observe the month by fasting each day from the break of dawn to sunset. And whereas the daily breaking of fast called iftar at sunset is often celebrated by family and community gatherings. And whereas one of the purposes of fasting during the holy month of Ramadan is for Muslims to gain a better understanding of the plight faced by those who are less fortunate. And whereas the end of Ramadan is commemorated by the Eid al-Fatihr, which translates to festival of breaking the fast. A joyous occasion marked by sharing sweets, gifts, and good tidings with family, friends, and neighbors. And whereas the American Muslim community is among the most racially diverse faith groups in the United States. And whereas an estimated one third of enslaved Africans brought to the Americas, including the American, American colonies later known as the United States of America, were Muslim and made innumerable contributions to the founding and construction of our nation. And whereas Ramadan reminds us that Islam has always been a part of America and Muslims have made extraordinary contributions to our country. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, mayor of the city of Bothell, do hereby proclaim April 2nd to May 2nd, 2022, is the month of Ramadan. And I affirm our city's commitment to ensuring that our city values remain welcoming and compassionate and that we pursue policies that respect the dignity and rights of all people, regardless of race, religion, immigration status, or country of origin, and urge the people of Bothell to join in celebrating the holy month of Ramadan and taking this month to honor the Muslim community and reflect on the health and well-being of family, friends, and fellow residents. All right, Shama, have you come down the hall?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. My name is Shama Farouq. I am a Bothell resident. Thank you, respectful Mayor Thompson, Mason Thompson, and thank you, Deputy Mayor Al Cabra and all respectful council members. This is a celebratory moment. I am really honored and proud to be a member of a community where my identity is celebrated. And I'm seen as equal and I'm heard like everybody else. I'm going to be mindful with your time. I'm just in two minutes, I'm going to let you know, share with you why I'm really honored for this moment. I'm an Egyptian American. I moved from Canada, I decayed back. And when I moved here, my younger, my older son was in kindergarten. And along the year, through the year, he learned all about all other cultures. Hanukkah, Christmas, Chinese New Year, Leprechauns, except his own culture. I shared my concern with his teacher and talked to her. She was so welcoming. She let me in. I made a presentation. I shared treats. I shared the culture. I got the amazing, most amazing hugs from the most beautiful kiddos. And after the presentation was over, one of the kids reached out to me and told me, why are you wearing this thing over your head? Are you bald? And I don't mind being bald, but I'm not. And I was expecting my son to come back home happy and feeling involved and loved. But unfortunately, the opposite was the case. He came home very mad and frustrated and told me, Mom, do not come to my school ever again. Speak about Islam or Ramadan or these things. It's uncomfortable. This is awkward. I don't want people to identify me as Muslim anymore. I was shocked. I told him, you know, buddy, it's too late. We named you Mohammed after our prophet. It's hard. It's hard, it's hard to hide our identities. Just let me know what happened. He told me that the kids targeted him after the presentation and one of the kids actually reached out him and asked him, would you share with me a photo of your god? And my son told him, he's a god, he's not a movie star. And then the kid told him, well, how do you worship something you don't see? So all of these things I'm sharing with you today, just to let you know that there's too much education needs to be happening. And the system, the government, needs to see us. And I'm, I'm grateful for this moment. It feels like one of my dreams is becoming true and I'm grateful for this moment, honored for this moment. This is a big divine pad on my shoulder. Thank you.
Shama, thank you. We're grateful for you and your family as well. All right, next up, we have our final legislative update and Shelley Helder, I believe, is here to present to us.
Good evening, mayor and council. Good to be with you this evening. I am going to bring my screen up here and share my presentation. I don't think I'm going to be able to talk what was just shared. That was very powerful. But I will do my very best to follow that tough act. Good evening, I am Shelley Helder. I have the privilege of representing the city of Bothell as your government affairs consultant for state legislative issues. And this evening, I'm going to be giving a presentation on what occurred during the 2022 legislative session. So here's just a brief overview of the purpose for tonight's presentation. Like I said, I'll give an overview of the 2022 legislative session. I'm going to outline the outcomes of Bothell's state legislative priorities. We'll talk about a couple other issues that passed that weren't necessarily the city's priorities, but may have an impact on the city and then we'll talk about next steps. So to start, the 2020 session was the second year of the two-year legislative cycle. So in the second year of the legislative cycle, it's a short session, it's 60 days. And really, the primary focus is adopting supplemental operating capital and transportation budgets. This second year was mostly virtual towards the end of session. It was a little bit more hybrid. But it was, it was still had limited in-person access, but lots of, lots of public access arguably virtually. Democrats still held the majority in both the House and the Senate, so no change from the first year of the biennium. One of the major outcomes of this past session was the passage of the Transportation Revenue Package, also known as Move Ahead Washington. And I'll get to that more in just a moment. In addition to all the budget items, the legislature also considered several bills. Every bill that was introduced in the first year of the biennium, so in 2021, that did not pass into law was available for reconsideration. And then legislators introduced new bills as well. So all of the new bills, and there were a little over a thousand new bills introduced in all the previous bills from 2021. In total, there were 303 new bills signed into law from the 2022 session. There's a lot of information on this slide and I'm not going to go over all of it. I'm just going to call out a few items to draw your attention to. I'll start on the left side for the operating budget. This is the state operating, state operating budget funds all state agency operations. So it's an appropriately named budget. operations. So it's an appropriately named budget. The February revenue forecast came in significantly higher than anticipated to the tune of a little, little less than one and a half billion dollars. That's in addition to revenue that came down from, from the federal COVID relief funding. So there was a good chunk of money that the budget writers wanted to account for in this supplemental budget. The final biennial budget is $63 billion budget. Two billion of operating budget revenues go or shifted to the transportation budget to help pay for Move Ahead Washington. About 800 million was left in reserves. And at the bottom of the screen, there are some, some highlighted investments that are relevant for local governments. Moving to the center column, the capital budget, this is the state budget that funds public and nonprofit construction projects. So bricks and mortar projects, everything that needs to be constructed but is not transportation related. The supplemental capital budget has a one and a half billion dollar budget and it's funded through combination of existing bonding capacity, federal infrastructure dollars and federal ARPA funds, as well as a small transfer from the operating budget. $62 million was allocated for the local community projects bucket. That's the bucket of funding that the city typically competes for, for local projects. That's where we have applied for funding for the North Creek Trail project. So 62 million was the total amount allocated in this supplemental year, which is a fairly large amount of money allocated in a supplemental year. As noted on the screen, 250 million was allocated in the first year of the biennium. And then finally, on the right-hand side, under the transportation column, there has been significant pressure on the state transportation budget over the last several years. Declining revenues, not, not only because of the pandemic, but because of declining gas revenue as a primary funding source for the transportation budget. There's pent-up demand for maintenance and preservation and for investments in new projects as well. The legislature did pass a, I guess, monumental package. The Move Ahead Washington package is a $17 billion investment over 16 years. And just as a frame of reference, the Connecting Washington package, which was the last package that passed in 2015, was $16 billion over 16 years. So it's, it's a relatively similar sized package to Connecting Washington. The primary revenue sources are a one-time transfer from the operating budget, as mentioned earlier. Climate Commitment Act revenues, which are, are projected to come in once the program is completed, completely up and running. Federal infrastructure dollars, slight increase in some transportation-related fees, and then ongoing transfer from the Public Works Assistance Account and the operating budget. Roughly a third of that funding is dedicated to transit, electrification of ferries, rail, active transportation. That's the revenue that is coming from Climate Commitment Act. It is protected and has to be invested into transportation that reduces carbon emissions. And then the remaining two-thirds of the package is dedicated to maintenance and preservation, some new highway projects, state-owned fish barrier removals, and then backfilling of projects that were initially funded in the Connecting Washington package, but are coming in over, over budget. So that's just a really high-level overview of the state supplemental budgets. And I think it's just helpful framework to have to understand where the opportunities lie moving forward. So I want to talk about specific to Bothell, where we landed on the city's priorities. For those of you who have been around for a few years, you may recall that at the end of session, I come to you and I say, we accomplished, you know, significant number of cities' priorities, and that just doesn't happen. And I've said to you before that we shouldn't expect this to happen every year, and I'm going to say it again. We should not expect this to happen every year. Having nearly every item on your legislative agenda accomplished in a supplemental year is just incredible. And I think it's a testament to, to the city's legislative representation. They are really fierce advocates for the Bothell community and are always looking for opportunities to bring back the items that the city has prioritized. So I'll just briefly go through each of these and explain a little bit about how we accomplish that success. I think, again, that's important as we're considering what the next steps look like for the city. So first, for the I-405 improvements, you all know this has been many years in the making. This is a priority that is really the testament to having year-round advocacy. From the end of the 2021 session to the beginning of the 2022 session, we worked not only with our legislative champions on this, which were Representative Dewar, Representative Slatter, and Senator Cooter, but also we met with legislators that sat on both the House and the Senate Transportation Committee. And those were members that don't live along the 405 corridor. But it's important that they understood the challenges and the impacts and the reasons that the financing gap needed to be solved. And all that work was done in the off months so that when the legislative session rolled around, there was broad understanding and buy-in for finding a solution. And I think not only is that evident in the fact that the, the funding gap, which was 450 million, not only was that addressed, but it was addressed, the bill, one of the solutions to the bill, House Bill 1990, passed with overwhelming bipartisan support. So again, the funding gap was 450 million. That's what was needed in order to ensure that the projects along the corridor could be completed in alignment with the rollout of Bus Rapid Transit. That 450 gap was addressed by $380 million being included in the Move Ahead Washington package. And then the remaining 70 million was funded through the passage of House Bill 1990, sponsored by your very own Representative Divina Dewar. And that bill defers sales tax on projects along the corridor until essentially 10 years after it's operationally complete. That financing tool is really only useful for toll facilities. So it's a tool that the state is using more, more often now, but was really only an option because 405 is a toll facility. Moving on, the second item on the list is the widening of Bothell Way Northeast and Bothell-Everett Highway. This is a project that's on the city's six-year transportation improvement plan and is roughly $55 million project. And the city has been going after funding at all levels, and our request was for 7 million. We recognize that that amount of funding was only going to be possible if a package was passed. And not only was the package passed, but it included $7 million. What's really significant about this is when the initial, when the package rolled out at the beginning of session, it did not include this funding for Bothell. It's only through working with our delegation, in particular Senator Stanford, really advocated to get this funding on the Senate list, and it was included in a revised version in the Senate. And then the delegation worked jointly to make sure that it was there in the final budget. The third item, North Creek Regional Trail. As a reminder, last year, so in the first year of the biennium, the city requested $600,000 towards this project, which we secured in the first year of the biennium. Heading into 2022, we thought, you know, it's not going to hurt to put a request out there. Well, we'll see what we can get. We requested $600,000, not knowing what was possible since we knew the capital budget was going to be smaller than the year previously. And Representative Kloba really championed this request and was able to secure $500,000 in the supplemental capital budget. Again, just an incredible, incredible outcome for a supplemental year. The transportation demand management at Canyon Park. This is an item that we've kind of had on the city's legislative agenda for a few years because we know that the need is, the need is coming. We did not have a formal request. It was more of a, you know, hey legislators, we want to make sure you understand what our priorities are moving forward. Because we did that, when there was an opportunity, Senator Stanford saw that there was an opportunity to get some additional operating budget funds. And typically, operating budget writers do not like to fund anything transportation-related. But there was an opportunity. We took advantage of it. City staff worked really quick in order to get that grant, grant funding request in, and it resulted in $250,000 coming to the city. And then finally, the downtown revitalization. This is one that, again, we, we had on our agenda because it's been such a big city endeavor. The city received a total of $3 million in remedial action grants in the first year of the biennium. That funding was at risk of being taken back by the state because of legislation that passed in 2019, requiring the city to secure all permits within a year of receiving that funding. The city staff have been working diligently to try to get those permits through the process, but it just takes longer than, than anticipated sometimes. There was legislation that would have changed that requirement. Bothell came forward and said, hey, this is a really important fix. We need, we need to fix this. So we supported that bill. It passed. The $3 million that Bothell has for those grants is protected. So again, an incredible outcome, accomplishing, you know, everything on your legislative agenda and, and more. As I mentioned, there were some items that are not on the city's legislative agenda, but I wanted to just call out, and I know I'm getting a little long on time, not, not intentionally. So I'm going to just call out one item on this list here and mention that there is a comprehensive report in council packet that goes over each of these items in even more detail than I'm able to cover tonight. I want to just call your attention to the last bullet on the screen. There were several bills introduced in the 2022 session regarding missing middle housing. And ultimately, none of those bills passed. However, there was $7.5 million included in the state supplemental operating budget for cities to receive grants in order to adopt ordinances that increase middle housing. I know that's something that the city has been wanting to talk about, so I wanted to flag your attention to, raise your attention for that. And as well as note that there will hopefully likely be some really robust stakeholder work on that topic between now and the start of next session. And so I think it'll be important for the city to engage in that if that's an area that you all are, are interested in participating in. So talking about next steps, I know I've referenced next steps on a few previous slides. And I, I said lobbying is a year-round effort and that, that continues to be the case. So, and then the next months, I think the first and most important thing we should be doing is recognizing the city's legislative delegation. As I said, the successive, the city's priorities would not be possible without your first district legislators really being your champions and, and your representatives in Olympia. So I know I'm working with city staff to identify a date and time to be able to recognize them and appreciate their efforts. Then I think the next item is to work on updating the city's legislative agenda and policy manual as a council, identifying what you want those priorities to be and how those priorities may align with opportunities that we see arising in the 23 session. Once those priorities have been identified, we'll want to do legislative outreach, not only to our legislators, but also to legislators that sit on relevant committees, other, other legislators that may have similar interests that align with ours. And then I mentioned, there's hopefully going to be a missing middle stakeholder group. I imagine there will be some stakeholder meetings on other housing policies. So depending on where the city's priorities land, maybe opportunity to engage in stakeholder meetings as well. New redistricting maps take effect for the 2022 elections where the entire House and half of the Senate is up for reelection. Bothell is still in the first district, but the district will shift slightly. So there will be changes for, for our representatives as well as changes in, in who is representing other districts. There are over a dozen legislators that have announced retirement, so there will be many new faces come 2023. And there will be new people in positions of leadership and in chairmanships, which have an impact on, on how committees are run and what bills are heard. So that was as fast of an overview as I could give of the 2022 session. So I will stop sharing my screen and see if there are any questions or comments.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Shelley, for a great summary and for all of your work keeping us on top of, well, Bothell, on top of what's going on in the legislature and the legislators keeping on top of the interests of Bothell. Helpful in both ways. What I'm curious about is we decided for the first time to, to employ a federal lobbyist, but I have heard no updates. And I'm not sure if we've reaped any rewards from that endeavor yet. I wondered if you had any way of relating to us what might be happening in that arena.
Yeah, I see interim city manager just raised her hand as well. I imagine there would be an opportunity for Travis to, to give an update to you all, but I'll defer to to Erin to see if she has anything else to comment on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dewar, and thank you, Shelley, for your update. Yes, we have been working diligently with Travis Lumpkin, and we will be bringing a federal legislative agenda to the council for your review and, and comment and approval. I believe we're aiming for May, and Travis has been tremendously helpful. We, just today, we sent a, a cover letter to the mayor for his signature for a raised grant for the Bothell Way widening project in hopes that we can just get an enormous grant from the federal government and just really get that project done. And we also have been looking at other opportunities for non-motorized projects as well as a utility project that would be really helpful for one, one of our disadvantaged communities. So more to come soon. So that's just a little teaser, but I think it'll be May.
Great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Zornz.
Well, Shelley, you know, as always, thank you. You're one of my heroes because I know you work so hard and I just, just appreciate the, the way you represent for us. And so, anyway, I, I, not to go down a huge rabbit hole, I did notice that there was a House Bill 1025 that was defeated that would have allowed for local approval of sales. What was it? One tenth of 1% for Parks and Recreation? Is that, do you have an opinion on that? Is that something that's going to be able to be revisited? Because for those of us with Herding Parks Department, that could be very, very appealing.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that question, Councilmember Zornz. That is a bill that has been introduced and been considered by the legislature the last three sessions, I want to say. And every session, it's faced a new challenge. And every session, it's overcome the challenge that it had the session before. So I share that to say I am confident it will, I guess I shouldn't say without much confidence. I, I think it will be reintroduced. And I, I don't know what challenges it has ahead of it next session. I can say, without going into too much detail, that its, its challenges this session were purely political, not policy-based. So I, I think it has a chance still.
Well, well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. It's on my radar. Really appreciate that. Thanks.
My pleasure.
If you may.
Lowering the hand does not mean unmuting. After two, haven't learned my lesson.
All right. Did you, did you want to talk or should I call in Councilmember Aldrich?
No, no, I wanted to talk.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Shelley. I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, I, I, as a new, the new guy on the council, you know, I had the honor of representing, representing, you know, the city a couple of times. So I just want to say thank you so much for making it really easy for me. Even though the hearings were not too easy because they shortened the time, so I had to go really fast, but I just want to say thank you so much for doing all the work behind the scenes to help us get to where we are.
Yeah, my pleasure. And I, I just have to say thank you for, to the council for being willing to, to testify. I think the virtual testimony, although it is maybe logistically easy, I know it can be time-consuming. I, I do think it's incredibly impactful when you have elected officials that take their time to testify on legislation. I think that makes a difference.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor. Jenny Aldrich's here. And just good work. Thank you. How do we celebrate meeting all of our legislative objectives? What, what does? Um, what what does that even look like? I'm very curious. Um, and I just want to thank you for for making it easy for um, you know, for as a new council member, just sort of shepherding us along through the process of like, here's where you show up and here's how you do it. Um, that was all just, you know, just a testament to the good work that you do. Um, my question for you is regarding the public safety legislation. Could you give a brief uh recap on that?
Of course. So I I assume you're referring to the um the bills that were passed regarding clarification of police reform. Is that what, is that what you're referring to, Councilmember Aldrich? Or is, is there another public safety topic?
Um, that is one. So clarifications on bills that were passed last year, but also um there were some relating to. No, go ahead. Go ahead with what you know and just sure, you'll cover what you cover.
Okay, there were three bills that passed um related or that were intended to clarify police reform from the twenty twenty one session where um law enforcement said that there was ambiguity in those bills that were passed. And so the legislature wanted to clarify what their intent was. Um, the three bills, just really briefly, one is um clarifying that all um less than lethal alternatives can be used. Um, the second one was clarifying that law enforcement can use um um reasonable force um in community caretaking functions. And then the third was um creating a definition for what use of force is. Um, there were also, I guess, maybe Councilmember Aldrich, this is what you're referring to. There was also legislation passed that was impactful to the city's radar program. Um, it was Senate Bill fifty six forty four, in case anyone wants to um look it up. It's in the report and of course, you can always look at it on the legislative website. Um, but essentially, it creates a a pathway for and and a kind of networking training opportunity for um co-responder professionals to um essentially have um trainings and share best practices um in or in as a way to grow that staffing pool. Um, I'm sure many of you are aware that co-responders are growing in popularity because they're an effective way to um to respond. But the co-responder staffing pool is is not sufficient to meet the growing demand. And so this is legislation that will hopefully help address that. Um, of course, it'll still take time, but at least the framework is there.
Thank you. I appreciate the recap, especially that part about Reader.
Shelley, I just wanted to say thank you again. Um, and you don't need to apologize for taking too much time. If it takes a long time to go over all of our legislative wins, like, well, we'll take that. Um, so thank you very much. We appreciate you. Um, let us know if there's anything we can do to help in the interim um in terms of our priorities for next year and um we'll, we'll do this again next year.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the Citywide Bike Plan Public Outreach Notification Briefing. And Sherman from Public Works is here to present to us.
It's on its way down. It's almost here.
Perfect.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, council members. Can you guys all hear me here?
Yep.
Uh, the home version. I haven't done this one before in a while, so I'm hoping that this will stay connected. Um, well, I'm here tonight uh to provide you a briefing about the draft Citywide Bike Plan. Since our last update in uh February of last year, uh, we appreciate you guys' uh patience during this whole process. Um, at this time, we have completed the draft plan and we have provided you a copy in advance of the public release. Uh, this briefing is to give you a high-level overview and provide you with information about the upcoming uh public outreach effort. I'm going to share my screen and see if we can get this slideshow going. Okay. All right, so. Guess we just leave this on here. Alright. So the goal, the goal of the plan is to provide a state-of-the-art bike system based on nationally accepted bike principles and standards that can be used by the majority of users, not just confident riders. This initial draft bike plan is based on public input uh from our initial public outreach effort and focuses mainly on the bike network infrastructure. The expectation is that the bike plan will continue to be expanded upon in the future and will include a few other things such as uh education, enforcement, wayfinding, and bike storage, all things that we heard previously as we were uh going through the process. To build out the ultimate plan completely will be expensive and will take some time. But the plan is, the plan is a flexible and implementable plan. It can be built as quickly as resources and funding will allow, while maintaining the ultimate vision of the plan and the ultimate improvements. So the draft plan has two parts, Part A and B. Part A is the long-range network, ultimate network, identified as the facilities that will provide the desired level of safety and comfort for all riders based on the characteristics of the adjacent roadway. In other words, what we can, what what the traffic volumes are like, what the speeds are like, etc. Uh, completion of the Part A projects will come via the large road projects, uh, private development and standalone bike projects. That's how we will work on those and implement Part A projects. For example, the Boffel Way widening project underway right now is already under design and will provide a protected bike lane in each direction on on the Boffel Way, Boffel Everett Highway section from Ridaway to two hundred and fortieth Street. Uh, Part B will provide the best connectivity with the gap fill-in projects to expand the existing network as we work towards achieving Part A. The Part B projects are proposed to be completed via an annually funded capital program budget using city funds and available grants that we can obtain. The Part A and B structure allows for the flexibility of project implementation and selection and and this will, this will allow us to continue to build the network out as fast as possible and not lose the ultimate vision, as I said before. So where we are now, the next steps we're preparing for is uh as we mentioned at the beginning, is this public outreach effort, which is beginning this month, and this will start with getting the plan on the city website for public review and online comment submittals. At the same time, we will have our second round of meetings with uh stakeholders such as the adjacent jurisdictions and some bike clubs. Um, and we will also try to reach out to our local community-based organizations uh to identify underserved or disadvantaged groups with the help of our public outreach consultant. Um, we will then plan to hold the virtual public meeting in mid-May, followed by planning commission review in July and council review in the fall. Uh, the intent is for the draft bike plan to be ultimately approved as part of this year's comprehensive plan update toward the end of the year. Um, thank you for all your time with the limited time allowed for this briefing. Uh, please let me know if you have any immediate questions regarding this overview and the out outreach, public outreach process, and I'll try to answer them for you. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Councilmember Zornz.
Well, I I always, I always love to see what you've been working on, Sherman, and um I'm sitting here thinking, am I going to live long enough to see this come into fruition? And would I be able to use it? Um, it's very, very ambitious, but um um I'm excited to see the the schedule that you've laid out and I hope people participate and come in and um and give their insights and uh and their concerns so that we're, we go at this as as uh best capable, uh uh the best way that we can. So I know you'll be asking the right questions and you're thinking, you're you're wait, you're many steps ahead of me on this process, but um but please get this done before I'm dead. That's my only request.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Well, to that point, I would also ask a timeline on this, just, you know, ballpark years for Plan A. Um, and one of the things I heard you say um was that you're looking at nationally recognized uh best practices. I'm wondering if you're also looking at internationally recognized best practices as well because it's not unfair to say that the United States is not leading the way on multimodal transportation and bike paths. Um, so I I would very much like to know if we can expand our horizons a bit and be informed um of about just a broader idea and and perspective. And there was one um, one photo in your presentation, which I I loved, and that was the uh the sheroes on the protected bike path with greenery and lights and sidewalk next to it. And that is just a dream come true, drooling over here and just praying and hoping for the day when when that can be um present in Boffel. I'm looking forward to biking that with my kids, although they will probably be grown up by then too.
Yeah, that's uh, yeah, nationally, national, national standards and practices is really what we uh NACTO is the, is the uh organization that is providing the main details and standards for us and what we use. Um, I have been involved in some international uh discussions with, that are held here in the United States that have been shared with our, you know, organizations and stuff like that, transportation organizations, and we've seen some things that have been done uh overseen on Amsterdam and whatnot and how they approach traffic. It's a whole different world out there, though, when you're talking about how international bike, bike networks are built versus in the United States. It's a whole different priority system. Cars, you know, they're, they're like, they're treated like we treat kind of pedestrians here, so it's a whole different game and, you know. But interesting point, and we'll, we'll try to get, we'll try to make it work for for everybody.
Councilmember Doer.
I think, Sherman, I had a question. I don't know if you guys remember, but I remember very distinctly a few years ago that former mayor Patrick Ewing came um with his bike that had been hit on Boffel Everett Highway. Uh, do you remember that? I'll never forget. He walked in, he was so angry and his tire was bent and um he talked about the safety or the lack thereof on Boffel Everett Highway. And now, you know, we've got money um coming in and we're going after more money. And I'm just wondering, I had two questions about Boffel Everett Highway. One is, are we going to do anything other than paint a bike lane? Are we going to have any protection? Um, and two, the other thing that has come up several times um from various cyclists is um the amount of debris and whatnot that ends up in the bike lanes that makes it not so safe, like whether it's dirt or leaves or trash or whatnot. And I'm wondering if that's part of the bike plan. And I guess the third question, so I will have to maybe repeat them. Um, is where we see the opportunities now that now that you've hopefully had a chance to look at the transportation package and how much money is allocated toward active transportation. There's just so uh so much promise in terms of getting funding to implement some of this stuff. And I'm wondering um how we decide what to prioritize and if if we've started to begin to identify which corridors and which, which bike um opportunities we're going to go after grants for.
Um, okay, I'll start off with Boffel Everett Highway. Uh, Councilmember Doer, yes, we are providing protected bike lanes for this widening effort that's from basically downtown up to two fortieth, where basically the county line. Um, that's the new section that we're widening and will have protected bike lanes. I don't see uh any potential, you know, other, other way to do it. It's, that's, that's, it's just not, no one would use it if it was just a a painted stripe on the road in in that kind of a system there. Um, beyond that, it is a bike lane now, though, and we will be connecting to it, but unfortunately, that's the in, that's the interim's scenario and until, you know, it'll, it will, because it has a, it has a network. Um, it's going to be a minute before we, you know, it rises kind of to the top to get more, a better network, you know what I mean? We want to, we want to try to get uh improvements to expand the network as opposed to just trying to make some parts better that have facilities already. But um, but for where we're, where we can build and what projects we are are coming up with this plan, we can identify what is safe and comfortable for all users and what we feel, you know, um, would work, would work for everybody. Um, as far as maintenance goes, that's a good question, too. It's uh, maintenance is a discussion that we were going to be having um that will occur with the capital facilities program budget and and all of that uh later this year. It will, you know, be a discussion between um Polyworks and and Parks Department even that, you know, looks at our trails and helps maintain those things. So that that discussion has to happen and it'll just be a matter of determining, I think, where that money will come from and I'll get, how much and how much gets allocated, how much they need to to maintain uh, you know, the bike facilities in addition, you know. Um, and then as far as opportunities go, uh, yeah, that's, there's definitely uh a lot of funding out there for right now for active transportation networks. Keeping an eye on that, trying to, that's why this is such a big push right now. We're trying to get this plan adopted so that we can uh be eligible for those funds. And I think that's that's going to be the key as far as getting those done. Um, it is uh, we, having a plan, we can include those, we can include these improvements as part of our road projects and and even opportunistic with with private developers that are coming in that, you know, may build on one of our facilities. And we can, we can, you know, we can have those people uh build our network out for us for for those parts, too. You know, and in the meantime, we, we can fund uh the gap filling ones and just get those in as much as we can.
Thank you. Great job in remembering all three parts.
I try.
All right. I'll go fast. Um, just a couple of quick questions, Sherman. Um, thank you for this. I read through this, really appreciated um a lot about this so far. Um, you mentioned you're going to reach out to cycling orgs. Um, what are we planning to do to reach out to people who aren't riding bikes yet? Um, you know, really, I think that's the, you know, the biggest opportunity that we have.
That's a good question. I think uh besides the webs, the webpage, you know, to identify, we'll let people comment and see, you know, we're going to have some canned questions on there that we're preparing right now before we put the, just before we just put the plan out there to ask that question, like, what would it take for you to get on a bike, you know? And what's your barrier? What um, I don't know, we're just kind of thinking out loud here from the questions I was already kind of running through because I'm talking to our consultant tomorrow about those specific questions and, you know, um things like what, what uh, what's, what's a safety issue for you besides traffic, for example? That's a, another question I was thinking about that we could ask and we could just, we have to just find out what's holding people from doing it other than, well, there's nowhere safe for me to do it. So, you know, I think that's kind of, that's kind of how we're going to get there.
I mean, and if that's the answer that we get, then, you know, we have our marching orders from there, too. Um, the um, and I don't know if you've reached out and I don't even know if they, they do this, but Anna Zivart runs the Dysmobility Project, um, which uh specifically is involved around helping people with disabilities get around. And I know she does a lot of work on active transportation as well. Um, I don't know if this is within the scope of things that she comments on normally or that they do work on, but uh they're an organization that I'd, I'd love to get their input if they're willing to.
Well, we have, uh, besides, besides like Cascade Bike Club and, and Snow, uh, Bikes in Snohomish County. We'll also talk to the Leaf Line and, uh, Health Departments. So those are other stakeholders that we're going to have those stakeholder meetings with. Prior to going out to, to the, how the virtual meeting basically, just to kind of get feedback from them and how we can, how they may have ideas on how to reach, reach groups as well, including Kate, King County Mobility Coalition, who we were, who I work with. You know, we, we work with them all the time and I'm involved in their meetings and everything as well as Snow Track. And those organizations both, uh, reach out to different, different kinds of groups of community-based organizations that, that we're looking to, you know, reach out to.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I thought you were done.
I'm fine.
Cool. Well, I'm, uh, I'm really looking forward to going and begging for some money for some cool bike projects next year in the legislature. So I'm, I'm excited to see the work that's being done on this and, um, looking forward to getting after it in our next session. And maybe a year from now, we can get some cool updates from Shelley about the projects we got funded. Councilmember Alderks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would just like, I really appreciate your last question and wanted to add that there is a pretty vibrant family biking community, um, online. And so if that is something that council members can help get the community outreach, you know, plugged into, I would very much like to see the outreach opportunities be extended to like some of those family biking groups. Even like stroller strides is a good one because many times those are groups that, you've got a large group of parents with kids in strollers and they'll use bike lanes instead of sidewalks. And so just getting it out there, making sure that, um, some of the, some of the people most likely to want to bike but aren't are parents with kids. And there's just a, it's just a vibrant scene. So let, let us know how we can help you get the word out and connect with those communities, um, who, who would really want to have a say in this.
Yeah. I, I could tell you that I'm looking at a, as I was mentioning, the community-based organizations, uh, list that Emily Warnock, our public, public outreach person, Polyworks already has assembled and it's huge. It's a, there's a over 70 groups, I would say on there, various types of and different things, but I've looked at that, that list too. And it's, it's, it's pretty big. It's, uh, if there's other groups like, like, like this family bike, these family biking groups, I know that you want to share with, share with us that, you know, we can reach out to. That'd be, that'd be amazing. I, I don't know if I would encourage too much strollers on the bike lanes, but that's, you know, I would, there's, there's going to be some, some facilities that are shared paths and shared, you know, that, 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 that we are going to be encouraging and, you know, that was, uh, promoting anyways. And those will be good facilities for that.
All right, Sherman, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Not seeing any other questions. It looks like he froze. And I believe we have, uh, next up is Blaine Land to present an update on our Friday night community event series, which I know we're all super excited to hear about.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Can you guys hear me? Perfect. All right. I will share my screen. I am delighted to give an update about the Friday night community events. I know that's been a buzzword and a buzz concept for a while. So I will share my screen and get going on giving a little bit more information on what to expect. All right.
I like it already.
Perfect. I know you asked for a really cool presentation. So here we go. I'm super excited to provide it. If you are good to go, Mayor Thompson, can you see this full screen? Are you, you seeing my first slide?
Yes.
Perfect. So I'm delighted to give an overview of conceptualizing what the Summer Friday Night Series is, the music, art and community event taking place in downtown Bothell. Uh, but before I do, I just want to give a little bit of overview of myself. I am the newest team member of the Parks and Rec Department. My role is Recreation and Community Event Coordinator. Um, and my first initiative is to spearhead this Summer Friday Night Series. And in order to do so, I did a lot of, uh, meetings. I sincerely, I thank, um, my director Nick Stroup for getting me to meet some stakeholders. I've been here for roughly three weeks, a little bit over three weeks. So we have a lot to do in a, in a short amount of time, but I, I am very optimistic to see this come to fruition this July. So I will provide a little bit more about the dates and the times, but I wanted to walk you through the vision that we have for the Summer Friday Night Series based off of the conceptualization of conversation that we've had with stakeholders. So the purpose behind the special events is to reignite special events in downtown Bothell by providing our community with a variety of entertainment, fun and family-friendly experiences. Many of our residents and those who come to Bothell loved our summer series events like concerts in the parks, where we featured musicians and local artists and so on, so forth. So the intention behind the Friday Night Series and from what I have understood is to reignite special events and utilize our main downtown Bothell area. With that being said, location is key. Um, with this special events, we are primarily focusing on the utilizing the city halls, the West and East Plaza, Festival Street, Main Street and the adjacent parking lots. So on this slide, what you will see of course is our beautiful city hall and you'll also see a draft schematics of what it could turn into if we're utilizing 101st, which is also known as Festival Street and the City Plaza. Landing pad right where the staircase is. So one of the big thing about location is the ambiance of lighting. It is an evening Friday night series. So we wanted to make sure that our attendees really get a good vibe and enjoy the atmosphere. So the schematic that you see below is just a hypothetical opportunity to how we could host. But I primarily want to inform everybody today that it is important that we are going to reignite downtown Bothell and we are going to utilize those main areas. So the City Hall, Festival Street, Main Street and the adjacent parking lots. With that being said, I am excited to dive into the theme of this Friday Night Series. Again, after many conversations with several individuals, what kept on being repeated was we love music, we love art, we love culture, we want to embrace all of the amazing things that Bothell has and it's so vibrant and thriving. So the intention behind the Friday Night Series is to capture all of that. To give some resemblance, we will have music. So the resemblance of concert in the parks, there will be a twist to it because our music platform will be at the city hall, uh, just a different scenery, different location. We also are working right now with the Bothell Arts Commission to create a scene, an atmosphere for local artists and, and artist is so broad. So we're going to work with the Bothell Arts Commission and local stakeholders to utilize Main Street as a platform to host kind of a market feel for our local artists. In addition to that, community, community is key. It was repeated over and over again when I was having one-on-one conversations and group gathering meetings that the stakeholders believe that there is this, um, celebration that takes place in our community. And so we aim to partner with three, two to three cultural groups to create an evening of celebration, education and recognition. I know that's a lot of key concepts to add into a series, but I think the versatility that we have to offer is that this series will provide variety. It will give us an opportunity to hone in on different demographics. It will give us to see who's coming out to events because I'm under the impression that it's been quite some time since 2019 that we've had the opportunity to host something like this. So why not be uniquely different? Without further ado, I do want to, um, note and thank all of you on this meeting today for meeting with me. In addition to that, since I've been on board, these are the community stakeholders that I have been in discussion with. The City Council, Parks Board, Bothell Arts Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, the DEI Cultural Crew, additional local stakeholders, and I have already reached out to local musicians, food trucks and organizations. Another key concept that was provided to me that food trucks, we want food trucks downtown to create this amazing atmosphere for people, for them to have fun to do. In addition to that, like large event, games and giant games at these events. So you're going to see a lot of versatility and, um, a lot of fun as one would mention to this type of event. So I really thank all of those power partners for meeting with me. It was so imperative that I did ask the general question, when you hear of this Friday Night Series, what came to mind? Everybody had a common collective, you know, answer, which was arts, music and cultural. So here we are, we're going to celebrate the Friday Night Series, um, in a, a, a unique way. And in order to do that, we have to create, uh, an amazing outreach program. We have to market properly. We have to reach our audience in different ways. And so how we're going to reach our audience and who our audience will be is by partnering with local groups, um, and different performances. Our, our, our audience will be a variety of different folks. So these events are truly aimed for family-friendly. I know I have mentioned music, arts and culture. Um, there is a youth aspect as well that was brought up in many discussions as a youth entertainment or youth outing. And I do want to preface it, the intent of this Friday Night Series is to gather all and give versatility to see who comes out. So the intent is a fam, family-friendly opportunity with activities for all ages. And we will have a larger and more diverse reach by partnering with local organizations, commissions, boards and community groups. And this is a slide I was very excited to showcase is the marketing concept. I have been in the works with many local, um, groups already and we're kind of thinking of how do we conceptualize and give this marketing a good pitch for this event. And what we're trying to do is highlight those distinct themes, the music, the art and the community. And so we are going to market through, of course, our Facebook and our Instagram and our website. But it's going to be imperative with the local groups and businesses is that we partner with it. They also can lean into the marketing efforts so that we do diversify our audience. Um, but this is kind of a mock view of what you're seeing on the screen of how we can market, whether it be flyers, posters, um, you know, we could do stickers, so on, so forth. There's a lot to have for this community event. I'm just very excited to have it come to fruition. I am going to lean in on this particular slide of the dates and the times. I think it's important that as I have been reaching out to musicians and food trucks and vendors to understand the sweet spot. And a lot of them have said, you know, from a musician standpoint, maybe it could be 90 minutes. It's pushing it to go into two hours. So what, what we're trying to do is create a timeframe, which is why I haven't listed it on there yet. Is what is that sweet spot for a Friday night in downtown Bothell? Is it six to nine? Is it six to 10? And that is those fine details that we are working on. But I will, um, say that we have finalized the dates. We will launch the first Friday Night Series on July 15th. It will be a music, um, night and then ensuing forward will go July 15th, July 22nd, July 29th, and so on, so forth for six, um, six weeks. So on this page, I would also like to highlight the intent of the Friday Night Series. I've given a lot of information. I've given you conceptual ideas from local stakeholders and those who I've met with. And after doing so, I've molded it in to a Friday Night Series where it's a three-week entertainment series cycled through twice. So we're highlight, we're highlighting music, art and community. So a three-week series cycled twice. We'll get music, art and community as you see on this slide, and then we'll roll it in and get into August. So the intent is to go from July 15th to August 19th. There is still opportunity to grow it or expand it a little bit more. But the main goal, um, my understanding this year is to create something of quality and that we can sustain and maintain for future years. I, I do want to also highlight that there are other community events taking place and that we want to shine a light on those in the, um, July and August timeframe too. Then I'm working with those power players too. As you can see in, in July, there are, our Fourth of July parades coming back. The Makers Market is going to be taking place along with the Bothell Art Scene is having an art walk. Primarily, these are Saturday or Sunday events, the Bothell 5K and potentially a business expo spearheaded by the Chamber of Commerce in August. So I am working with those power players to make sure that these events align with other opportunities as well. So that is in summary of our sun, um, summer nights in downtown Bothell. It has been such a pleasure these past three weeks, getting to meet some amazing people and understand the sense of this community. It is vibrant and thriving and I really look forward to working with our stakeholders and our power players to make this come to fruition. There are many logistical things that we are factoring in. We are factoring in the streets and marketing and communication and just getting vendors and seeing how we can revitalize and reignite downtown events. I sincerely appreciate the time tonight to chat with you all. I will stop sharing my screen and open up for questions.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Blaine. Um, I feel heard. This is wonderful. It's really exciting. I feel like a lot of the things that we talked about and that frankly, um, were envisioned early on are in the plan. I feel like lots of ideas that came up previously in council meetings from all council members have been included. I just had a couple of questions. One, um, we had originally talked, when we had our conversation, we had talked about three, um, Friday nights and then a fourth kind of more broadly, or I shouldn't say really more, uh, culturally focused, um, ethnic, um, fourth series where we would pick a culture and then make it thematic throughout. Of course, I don't see that. So I, I hate to ask, but I, that was so exciting to me, the idea. And I just wondered if that's still a possibility or we just haven't gotten around to it yet, or we're still trying to make that work.
Yeah, no, um, I apologize for not, um, clarifying that in my presentation. So the community, it with the tagline is a cultural celebration. So the intent for the community, um, night is a cultural celebration. So we will be actually, I am working with some cultural groups right now and that will be coming into that. So music, yes, is going to be kind of a twist on concert series. Art is going to be this, this vibe of what we're kind of wanting, street performance like buskers and local artists and potentially highlighting a certain heritage. And then the community is celebrating two to three different cultural groups. And that is my responsibility to work with those cultural groups to create whatever that comes to fruition. So one is we are working with Utsav on August 19th. I did get to speak with some of you about that. It, it did be fitting and aligned with Utsav because, um, Indian Independence Day is on August 15th. And so that is coming on August 19th. And now one of the other weeks I'm working on which cultural group to partner with.
Okay. So we did scale it back from eight to six.
There is a potential, um, when we originally spoke, you know, we had mentioned the three weeks potentially going to fourth. The fourth was the youth aspect and that can definitely, we are leaning into figuring out who could come in for that fourth side. But from a robust standpoint, something that's quality that we can maintain within, you know, these next three months, we were kind of honing into six weeks. We also leaned into, I believe it was Councilmember Alderk mentioned that maybe we can capital, capitalize at the end of this a big celebration, week seven or week eight. So those are, um, really cool core concepts to be, um, thinking in, but right now the focus has been that, that those three weeks going into six and we can definitely lean in because it is such a opportunity to grow. I mean, we're only three weeks in from the planning construct, but yes, definitely a fourth week is doable. Potentially goes expanding to eight and then that opportunity to do a big celebration at the end is option as well.
It sounds wonderful. And I, I noticed we did, we talked, uh, about trying to, um, align with, um, Saturday events to maybe be able to use some LTAC dollars if, if we had budgetary constraints that we could maybe, um, you know, with that alignment, uh, qualify. So hopefully that's possible because I know this is, um, it's not cheap, but it's going to be so amazing. I'm telling everybody and everyone I've talked to from other cities are like, Friday nights, Bothell, I'm there.
Awesome. No, I am very excited. I sincerely appreciate all of the groundwork and the concept that you guys have created and I get to lean into that kind of molding it in. Now I believe it will be a great opportunity and it's something uniquely different because I noticed that other communities have, you know, fun Friday nights, but this is, it's different when we're giving a flair of variety per week. And it gives the opportunity like, hey, oh, I went on this one, but next week's something different too.
I love it. I, I really love it. Thank you so much. I'm really excited.
My pleasure.
Councilmember Zornz.
Blaine, thank you. I feel like a kid at Christmas time with a whole bunch of big packages and shiny ribbons, and I want to shake it and know what's inside it. So I know it's taking a lot of organization and energy on your part to put it together, and I don't want to exhaust you, but anything we can do to help, you know, let us know. And of course, I'm very excited to see busking being promoted.
Yeah.
Just really excited for that. So that, like Davina said, thank you for hearing us and, and interjecting some other things that we hadn't considered. I was, we were talking about, you were mentioning having things for kids. And I remember the, I think it was Wednesday afternoons, they had music in the park just for the littles. And that was hugely and well-attended. And it's very hard to have something for every age group because every age group for kids has different things that really pique their interest. So I don't, I imagine it's too late to put music in the park for the littles. I'm trying to remember what was the group that was just always, all I can think of is Captain Underpants. Thank you, that one. Poor boys, I think of Captain Underpants, but yes. But you know, just at some point, because like you said, you're giving us this measure of caution of we're going to jump in with both feet, but we're not going to jump into the deep end with both feet. So I don't want to, I don't want to overload it, but at some point where we can think about how to incorporate the littles and then celebrate them, that would be great.
Most definitely. I think that's a, a core group that we need to reach out to. The intent to, you know, I've definitely, the intent is to make this family-oriented in all ages. I do like the idea, I believe one of the council members had said, let's have giant games at this, you know, the music night so that there is something for youth and there is something for families. So we'll definitely lean into those aspects, but I know right now the, the focus is the Friday night series, but in the works, because it's only been three weeks, we can definitely look into what is, what's an extra thing that we could have for youth predominantly? Maybe that's down at Bothell Landing, there is always opportunity to grow. Thank you.
Councilmember Aldricks.
So good to see you again, Blaine. Thank you for this presentation. You totally delivered, and it, you know, like Councilmembers Art said, it's, it's like, it's very exciting over here. And one of the things that I, I feel like you picked up on that was one that I could even kind of lost track of in, in all of our brainstorming together, and it was that, that we can make sure that each and every week is a family-friendly experience. And by inviting those games in, I'm, I'm going to name drop a pretty obscure place. Not many people have probably heard of Lowdy, California, but they did a series like this. And I don't know if they still do pandemic, you know? But they would have bounce houses and like inflatables out in the streets. And so I'm wondering if that is something to, that you've considered and, you know, where those could be located so that, you know, kids and families are feeling welcomed and, and included in each of these weeks.
Definitely. If that is something of interest, something of a larger scale like inflatables, we can look into that. I think it's important to note the location that we're utilizing right now, this festival street, Main Street, it is a high-traffic location. So we are, you know, working around creating a, or morphing the event in those, those platforms like City Hall and the Plaza. And I'm thinking of that grass-lawned area next to the city hall. And it is a little sloped, but it could have an opportunity for something large like that. But yes, I think the core element that we all need to take away today is the intent behind these Friday night series is for all, and there are going to be elements that are all for all ages, specifically even the art nights of buskers. Buskers are uniquely different. There is a lot of different things in busking, but there is street performance. They're in different levels of it and different engagements and for different ages. But we also want to have something for the youth, like an activity. The Bothell Arts Commission that I'm meeting with again tomorrow has been thinking of different ways to have activities for youth and for families when they do arrive, so that is important to lean on, on that stakeholder for the Main Street section. And then for the cultural celebrations, even working with Utsav, he is just delighted to have interactive performances like dance and vendors and food trucks that could bring in that idea of for all to enjoy. But I do like the idea that you're saying for inflatables, I'll just look into a schematic standpoint, you know, where, where could that fit in? And if not that, what are additional activities for youth and for families?
I love that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Zornz.
Just a quick interjection. If we could recycle water, that slope, perfect for slip and slide.
It might be, yeah.
Just had to put that out there.
The event planner goes and me, it's like, there's a street right there and there's traffic and there's a sidewalk. The event people, we always think of safety first, so, but I do love that idea.
Well, a short slip and slide.
Well, thank you so much.
All right, I just, I have a couple of quick questions for you. I won't go fast. Councilmember Aldricks, I haven't been to Lowdy, but I did grow up listening to Creedence Clearwater Revival, so I've heard of it at the very least. And I just wanted to say thank you. I love the branding, by the way. It looks great. Is there any chance you could like send me those? Because the screenshots I took tonight, like, probably aren't as good.
Yes.
And, and just one question. The, the two events that are not music, we're still planning on having music at those events, it's just not going to be like the highlighted one, right?
Correct. Yep. All of the events will have components of performance, dance, music, definitely.
Awesome. And I probably shouldn't ask if we fill up July and August early, if we could do September too?
Oh, you know, hey, why not? Like the sky's limit, right? No, I definitely think there's, I think, you know, speaking with Nick and the team, the only thing that I'm running into is making sure, one, vendors are actually still in business, and two, that the performance arts aren't, aren't already booked. Because they're, they have been chomping at the bit, that has been a little bit of a conundrum with making sure that we can book them in a timely fashion. So if I'm seeing that there's availability and tweaking the timeframe, I think that's an opportunity for sure. Also honing in sustainable budget as well. But I do want to lean into, after hearing, you know, a couple of council members saying youth, how could we add in maybe a fourth series or a component for that? But definitely, I think there's room to grow.
Awesome. Well, we're all looking forward to it, and Erin, I bet you're excited to get off to Public Works again. But Blaine, thank you so much. Really appreciate you coming here to talk to us.
Thank you.
All right, before we get into the rest of our agenda, we are going to take a break. We're gonna break for 20 minutes. It is eight o'clock by my clock right now, so I will see you all at eight twenty or 20 minutes from your clock. Councilmember Doer, you okay?
We.
You, you're muted. I will talk to you when we get back.
No, I just, I, I tried to unmute, but it didn't take. No, we just normally have a five-minute break, so I'm like, 20? What will I do? Take a nap? I'm not sure.
If you were, if you were a proponent of Islam, you could break your fast.
Oh, got it.
We are up next is visitor comment in keeping with Governor James Lee's emergency proclamation 2028 regarding open public meetings. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3pm today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any visitor comment signups?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had one written comment received by Greg Smith, who wrote regarding the March 22 meeting in the budget process. Those comments will be or were sent to council will be made part of the record for the evening. And then we also have a list of folks who have chosen to or requested to speak live. Before I get started, I just wanted to quickly mention we did have council committee reports on the agenda. If there are any perhaps that could be quickly gone over after after we're done with public comment.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we've got a lot of folks that have been waiting very patiently. So the first person I have is Deepa Savrajan. Savrajan, thank you, Deepa. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Thompson, and all the council members for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Deepa Savrajan. I am the Washington Clean Buildings Policy Manager at Climate Solutions, which is a local nonprofit working to accelerate clean energy solutions to the climate crisis. I wanted to state today our support for any efforts that the council might take to act on climate change and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, specifically in buildings, both homes and commercial buildings in the city of Bothell. This is work that we have done with a number of local jurisdictions in Washington, including Shoreline, King County, Tacoma, Olympia, Seattle. These are all jurisdictions that have recently taken action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in new buildings, particularly from the use of fossil fuels like gas to heat and cool homes. So there's a lot of benefits of reducing new greenhouse gas emissions beyond just meeting the climate goals that are required statutorily. There's also impacts to public health from reducing air pollution and safety from reducing the risk of leaks and gas fires. There are also significant cost savings, especially for single family homes and building all electric buildings instead of gas fired buildings. And there are significant clean energy job opportunities in creating a clean energy economy that relies on what is our increasingly clean electricity here in Washington. So I know that climate issues are a front of mind for a lot of the council and that we really look forward to seeing more discussion on this topic and looking at phasing out the use of fossil fuels in buildings as part of one of the biggest sources of emissions and fastest growing sources of emissions in the state. So really looking forward to seeing what what Bothell does in regards to this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deepa. Next, we have Jessica Ostfeld. Hi, Jessica. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Jessica Ostfeld, and I have lived in Bothell for almost a decade. First of all, let me say I am just so proud to live in Bothell, especially seeing like all the work that the council is doing. Sitting being here since six o'clock, it's just been amazing to hear about all the different things going on in Bothell. And I just want to give my heartfelt thanks for all the hard work every single council member and every single staff person for Bothell is doing. I really appreciate it. I also wanted to take a moment to sincerely thank the council for joining the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. This action indicates to me your drive to secure a livable future for all generations to come. This action gives me hope, and I am sure that it gives many of my peers hope as well. And I just really wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that and thank you. And as I'm sure you already know and are already thinking, joining K4C King County Cities Climate Collaboration is just a start. And I stand or sit here today asking you to take three more steps towards a more sustainable, livable, and equitable future. As the most recent IPCC report conveys, it is really now or never to avoid the most devastating impacts of climate change, impacts that my generations and the generations after me will bear the brunt of. But it is also a chance to create a better future. One, I asked that the council require the electrification of new buildings so that all new buildings may run on renewable energies. Deepa was alluding to this. Also, electrification was touted in the most recent IPCC report as a central tool for mitigating climate change. And while I know the state of Washington is considering a statewide ordinance, if this does not go into effect, I do encourage Bothell to take action on electrification. Two, I asked that the council consider creating a climate action plan or sustainability plan similar to the plan that Kirkland has created that has ambitious greenhouse gas emission cuts that align with those recommended by the IPCC, meaning at least a 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. Additionally, I ask that the plan address not only mitigation efforts, but also adaptation and preparedness actions for the region's climate changing and increasingly turbulent climatic conditions. To address climate change and get where we want to go, we need to know the path forward. And finally, three, in line with the climate adaptation and preparedness, I ask the council to continue pursuing the restoration of the riparian habitats of office creeks in the Semamish River. I'd like to thank the council for all that Bothell has already done on this front. And I just look forward to seeing what Bothell does to address climate change and these environmental concerns going forward. And I do thank you for all that you've done so far. With that, I will conclude my statement. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have Karsten Kurde. Hi, Karsten. You have three minutes to speak.
Thanks so much. Hey, Council, it's Karsten. I am speaking tonight in a personal capacity. As all of you know, so much has changed in the last five years in Bothell. But tonight, I'm especially frustrated by the lack of progress and transparency on our bike plan. At this rate, will I live long enough to see it come to fruition by cycling on our existing infrastructure? To achieve the best possible outcomes, radical engagement and outreach is necessary. We can truly transform the way that we move people throughout our city, and we know how to do it equitably. Do you remember the pros plan that we went and put together? Reaching high schoolers or seniors on tricycles should be in the realm of our vision. Unfortunately, the length of time that's been spent on planning isn't necessarily translating into a stronger plan. I encourage you to not let sunk costs guide decision making, which will set the stage for infrastructure that will last for generations to come and impact the safety of road users outside cars. If you've not thought about the bike plan recently, I'd encourage you to take a ride with your family or friends this April. On 2/28, it's especially anxiety inducing to ride without physical separation and protection from many thousands of pounds of steel and glass and fuel at speeds that could kill. Paint alone is not protection, and if you wouldn't let a child ride in the bike lane, it's not infrastructure worth building. Let's be focused on a safe network for all. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Karsten. Next, we have Greg Smith. He's on his way. Hi, Greg. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Greg Smith. I'm a citizen of Bothell. Thank you for taking our comments tonight. Since we have the start of the budgeting process beginning soon, I went to the recording of the March 22 meeting and watched the city budget 101 segment. I learned a couple of things there. It appears we are in financial imbalance. That does not worry me for that does worry me for a couple of reasons. First, we cannot persist in an unbalanced situation. Plus, we want to restore those services we reduced during the emergency and/or add new programs. On first thought, that would seem to be an insurmountable challenge. Well, I want to talk about starting a new program, creating and executing a climate action plan, one consistent with our decision to join the King County Cities Climate Collaborative. We don't have to pause our commitment to climate change action because of concerns over budget shortfalls. First of all, the outcome we want to see within the goal and priority of creating and executing a climate action plan is to achieve a 43% reduction from current levels of Bothell's greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and by 84% by 2050. This is according to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. There is not much, but we do have time, and it will take some time and some coordinated effort between the council and the city manager's office to develop suitable plan, a suitable plan of the necessary scope and magnitude and cost. Plus, there are a significant number of resources out there. Ones that can suggest components of a plan that can combine to effectively cut our city's greenhouse gas emissions. Many of them have been demonstrated to be successful planned components in their own cities. Plenty of them have reasonable costs attached to them. There is an excellent probability that Bothell can have and execute an effective and efficient and effective plan. an effective and efficient and effective plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Next, we have Ally Lee. You have three minutes to speak.
Sorry about that. It went off my screen there for a minute. Thank you so much, and I'm so glad I joined tonight. I learned about events that are coming up in your area. So excited to join those. Dear Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council, thank you for taking the time and inviting us here tonight and listening to what we have to say as community. My name's Ally Lee. I'm the Health and Equity Building Specialist with Climate Solutions. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak on why it's important to me that we have clean, safe, and all-electric homes. I want to first congratulate you on the many steps forward you have taken on climate actions and have done in your community, from working with TCC and the campaign on transportation. It's been great to see the strides that have gone forward and then now working on electrification, buildings, climate, and clean and breathable air. The World Health, sorry, the World Health Organization has said that air quality rates second to climate change. So there's an urgent need to make sure that we have clean air for our communities. In Washington State, our most vulnerable and impacted communities are hit the hardest by old gas ranges that leak methane all the time and that also are pipelines that then can smell or not smell close to our homes that are less than five feet away. This is making a lot of citizens nervous as far as not knowing when a leak will happen and when it will not. The American Lung Association says that the region has the highest rates of pediatric and adult asthma, along with some cancers caused by the air that we breathe. And even though we're making great strides now, it's not fast enough. The city of Bothell has then done great things as far as sustaining and preserving the environment around us on the outside. And now it would be great to take a look on the inside, in our own homes, in our buildings, in the place that we visit often. I want to congratulate Bothell again on joining the K4C and also in making great strides and steps forward for a more livable Bothell. If you need any further information, I'm available anytime and be happy to share that with you. And please do not hesitate to reach out. I look forward to ongoing conversations and good luck with the upcoming City Manager X, which might be a train coming up. Love that name. And happy Earth Month. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ally. Next, we have Melanie Traubridge. Looks like we're having trouble bringing her in. Let's try again. I think she's coming now. Or not? I'm not sure. I apologize. I can't see her at this point. Let's move forth and see if we have anybody else, and hopefully Melanie will rejoin. Next on the list, I have Ruth Sawyer. I don't see the name Ruth Sawyer in our attendee list, but if she by chance is under another name and attending the meeting. Ruth, if you could use your raise hand feature, we'll try to identify you and bring you into the meeting. And I'm not seeing Ruth. We also had a Neil Anderson that was also on the list, and I do not see that name either. So if there's anybody in the attendee list who would like to speak in public comment, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. I'm not seeing anyone. I'm not sure what happened to Melanie, but Mayor, if she does manage to come back, do you want me to let you know?
Depending on, I mean, if we're, you know, five minutes into an hour presentation, Melanie might not want to hang out all that time. But yeah, we'd love to have her.
I understand. Okay, I understand. I believe she, she may be back next week as well, so.
Perfect.
I'll keep a lookout and let you know. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Interim City Manager Lenhart or council, do we have any items on projected agenda discussion tonight? I'll take that as no. Onto the consent agenda, I believe we're just looking for a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda. Councilmember Duer.
I moved to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Deputy Mayor.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Nope. I'm gonna go for a motion for acclamation. If anybody does not like that, speak now or forever hold your peace. I see nothing. It is passed. All right. Councilmember McNeil, what agenda bill did Councilmember McNeil pull?
22056.
All right, let's do that before we jump into our longer ones this time. Let's do 20046? 22?
220 056. My apologies.
Okay, I was gonna say I don't see a 46 in here.
Yeah, my apologies.
All right, we've got 22056 to consider suspending the rules of recording for the city council retreat. Councilmember McNeil, do you want to kick us off on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought it would be great to kind of gauge the interest from council to see if anybody would like to actually record the meeting. And the reason I'm thinking about recording, forgive me, I'm a little clouded right now, but I think this is a great opportunity for educational purposes. For, you know, all of our meetings are recorded, but having a way for us to kind of go back and see some of the conversations and things that we have during a retreat is a great opportunity, a great educational piece. I've been going through some master classes at work, my day job, and some of the things that we do is have these robust conversations. It's very enlightening, and it's a way for us to build relationships with one another and go back and see how we interact with one another. And so I thought it might be a great building tool for us. You know, it's the same old, same old. We don't record, but I think it might be great to record. But I wanted to gauge council's interest in doing that. I don't think we've done it in the past, but I think, you know, this might be something that we started new on and see how everybody feels about it.
Councilmember Duer.
I tend to think we should not record. As I remember, staff often recommends that we not do it because of the considerable expense and interference with really, really long agendas and whatnot. So I'm inclined not to be in favor. We have plenty of video and tape of us interacting with each other. That's my 10.
Councilmember Zornz.
Actually, okay, lower my hand. There we go. Actually, I was thinking of pulling this agenda bill, but for an entirely different reason. When we think about having accessibility and people being able to watch and have, know what's going on with council, of course, we ought to be able to record it so that people can, if they miss the live performance, because, or live performance, did I say performance? I really did, didn't I? The live conversation, because they have their kids at ballgames or whatever, or they're actually enjoying their Friday evening, having a family movie night or something, they would be able to watch and see our thought processes. I mean, if we care about transparency and accessibility, we ought to be recording it. Now, I hadn't even thought about the conversation piece because we talk at each other because of Robert's Rule of Orders, right? We don't really have a chance to see conversation. And the merit of being able to go back and watch how we interact with each other, like, were we leaping to conclusions and hearing things that weren't being said? Would be a good growing piece for myself as well, to be able to go back and see how communication was really happening. So if our interim city manager has some input on cost on this, is it prohibitive? I don't think it's going to dampen our conversation. I just can't think, recording that is, is just a win-win on a couple of levels there, important levels.
So thank you, Councilmembers Zornz. I don't believe it'll be cost prohibitive. We have, we're currently doing a hybrid option anyway. So we will have the AV folks there putting it on the TV channel, live streaming, as well as, so they will be there. So I don't think that there will be any additional expenditure. And then Deputy City Clerk can correct me if I'm wrong.
So there's really no. I'm sorry.
I was just going to confirm Erin is correct.
Okay, so except for not wanting it recorded because we just want to have that conversation and put it in the rearview mirror, there's really no reason why we shouldn't record it, is there?
Deputy Mayor.
I don't think that question was for me, so.
So you had your hand up. I assumed it was rhetorical.
Was it rhetorical? I don't know if you're expecting. I was going to ask about, I know Empire, so past few retreats, those weren't recorded. Why weren't they recorded in the past?
It's my understanding, part of it is to encourage unrestricted conversation, since historically they haven't been televised either. It's just with the governor's proclamation, we currently are required to provide a virtual option for participation right now. So historically, we may not have had to pay the AV person as well as a less formal environment and atmosphere when it's not being recorded.
So they weren't even televised in the past. So why are we doing live streaming this year? Is it because of the proclamation you mentioned? So it was, if you have, if council meets on Zoom, you have to televise it? Whereas if he met in person, you don't have to televise it?
Deputy Mayor, right now, we have to provide a virtual option, even if the council meets in person.
I see.
Due to the proclamation from the governor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor. Interim City Manager Lenhart, my question for you is, does the governor's proclamation also stipulate that retreats are recorded? And I just would like to know what are other city managers in our region doing and how are they handling the situation?
I thank you, Councilmember Aldrich. I will defer to the city attorney as far as requirements for recording. I don't believe that, that that is, that recording is a requirement.
That's, wow, let me turn the light on. Sorry, that is correct. The recordings are not a legal requirement. It's only that the minutes are kept. The Bothell City Council traditionally has always recorded all of their meetings, put them either on now YouTube. And in the past, while we have suspended the recording, there's always been the public option, and I've been present when the public, members of the public have shown up and observed the council during these retreats. But it is as city, and interim city manager Lenhart said, the proclamation because of COVID is what requires the, the option for us to have a call-in so that people can listen or a video component so that people can participate and see what's going on.
And, and as far as the, what other cities are doing, I haven't spoken with anyone recently. I know that historically, in my experience, they, retreats aren't typically recorded, but that's, that doesn't mean that that's not happening more broadly. But I certainly could look into it, although we are, and we could still, council could still discuss it next week if you'd like me to do some research between now and then.
All right, I think everybody else has weighed in. You know, one thing nobody's brought up is, you know, it's our first time, hopefully, working with candidate acts, which might just have to stick. And, and I feel like having that first time working recorded would make that a little bit more formal in a way that I would prefer that it wasn't. You know, this is the only time we, as a council, have a chance to get together and talk in a slightly less formal way without Robert's Rules Unrecorded. And it also allows staff to, you know, not have the pressure of knowing that it's going to be on TV forever. I think the way that we've always done this is totally adequate, which is to not record it. We're not going to be making any policy decisions. We're not going to be, you know, taking any votes and any results that come out of it, like, like goals will be made public in a meeting that is recorded. So I just, I, I don't see a need. Is there a motion? Councilmember Duer. You're muted.
Move the recommended action. I'd like to speak to my motion when it's time.
Noted. Do I have a second? Councilmember Aldrich.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Councilmember Duer, you'd like to speak to your motion. Now's a good time.
Well, I mean, I'd just like to say, you know, these retreats are an opportunity to try to bond with our fellow council members. It's no secret that we have some differences. And the way that you bond with people is by being vulnerable and being open. And I think recording that for posterity makes it very difficult to do so and to be vulnerable and talk about your fears and why maybe you have taken certain stands or feel a certain way about things. It's like our only opportunity to ever do that. And I think we have some work to do as far as becoming more cohesive. And I certainly don't think feeling like their potential gotcha moments are going to be recorded is a way to do that. And so that's why I'll be supporting this motion.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I won't, I won't be supporting the motion, not because I don't feel that this is a great opportunity to bond as a council. I do feel the retreats is, is the best place and the best opportunity to bond. Having gone through many of these in the past, it's, it's the time in which we kind of come together and celebrate some of the things that we've done as a city and the places that we're going to go as a city. I more was looking at this as an opportunity to be able to reflect on the conversations that we do have and to use it as an educational tool. But kind of listening to the conversation and some of the narrative that has been discussed here tonight makes, tends to make me think that we really do need to make sure that we're kind of open and transparent, not only with our feelings behind closed doors, but out in the open. And in order for us to learn and to grow, what we say behind closed doors, we need to be able to say in open and vice versa. And we need to be able to treat each other with respect and go into things with an open mind and an open heart. And so to me, I, I was merely bringing this up because I've gone through some stuff in my professional career where the tools that are used in the recordings that we're able to go back and watch, we're able to learn from, and it helps us to grow as a team at work. And so that's merely why I was bringing this up. But the conversation went a different direction, and so it really now makes me believe that I think more than ever, we need to ensure that we have ways that we can watch things like this that are educational for us to learn how we speak to one another so that we each, each have a voice at the table and allow each other to speak freely and learn from the way we talk to people. The way we talk to people and how we talk to people, how that affects the conversation as well.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I think I will support this. This hasn't been brought up in past retreats. And it's going to be a public meeting where people are going to view. So we are going to have to, you know. We have to be vulnerable. We have to be open when we say, but at the same time, we are going to be professional and, you know, speak with each other. You know, respectfully. So. I don't see the need for recording, you know, at work. You may have. You know, recordings that we can go back to, you know, but those recordings are doable. By the rest of the world, you know, they're only within that team or within that, you know, organization. So I, that's all I have to say for now.
Councilmembers Zorns.
I, everyone is very thoughtfully sharing their hearts here. I'm not going to support this. Because this conversation is a different dynamic than Robert's Rule of Orders, and I really would like to be able to. Go back and watch, not the whole thing, but pieces of it, just to watch and see. How those intercommunication skills are working or not working. And then I will also say that I know from past that. People watching or coming and observing can record, they're allowed to record these. These retreats. I know people who've done it in the past. So just because we're not recording it, doesn't mean someone else is not. So so be aware of that. Don't be shocked if, you know, somebody has a bootleg copy of our our retreat that crops up. So just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, and that's all I have to say.
All right. Deputy City Clerk.
You say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmember Zorns?
No.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
No.
Councilmember Manke is absent. Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Motion carries four to two with Councilmember Zorns and Councilmember McNeil in the negative.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you very much. All right, we are going to move on to Agenda Bill twenty two zero five seven, the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan twenty twenty four periodic. Update scope. And I believe we have Director Cotterman here to present to us.
We do. He's on his way.
Well, that's a long hallway. Thank you, Mayor Thompson, and good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of the city council. Lot of excitement tonight, a lot of really positive, exciting things on the agenda, new city manager. Bike plan progress, the Friday night events, the legislative successes. Now we get to talk about the comprehensive plan. So I would, my request is that you all try to contain your excitement. Until we get to the to the end of the presentation, if you would. I'm also joined this evening by Steve Morikawa and Boyd Benson from our Public Works Department. So they're going to be speaking towards some aspects of the plan. I'm not seeing Boyd yet.
He's coming, Mike.
There you, thank you. So I am going to. Share my screen. You would think after all of this time, I would have this down. Pat, and I do not quite. Is that visible?
That is visible. It's okay, Mike. Nobody's good at this yet. It's fine.
We keep trying, though. And I'm trying to get it to switch. There we go. So obviously, I was a little tongue in cheek talking about the the excitement about the comprehensive plan. I realize this is not the most. Exciting thing on the agenda this evening or any evening for that matter, but it is very important and. Something that I would point out is the reason that this is important is in the name itself, Imagine Bothell. This is about looking toward the future. This is looking twenty years into the future and what. What do we want the community to be in twenty years? Where is it now? Where do we want it to be and how do we get there? That's what the comprehensive plan is really about. I'll give you just a couple of local examples. Downtown Bothell. What we're seeing happen, that the transformation of downtown Bothell was envisioned about fifteen years ago is when that started. And that was the plan that was put in place, and we're starting to see that come to reality. If you look at downtown Bellevue and the transformation that it has experienced in the last thirty five, forty years, that was envisioned back in the nineteen eighties. So what we're doing here is very important, and it does make a difference in the future of the city and the people that live and work here. So with that, what we want to talk to you about tonight are some key aspects of the periodic update. That we're required to do under the Growth Management Act. So we're going to provide a little bit of context for why we're doing this, what's involved with it. We're going to talk about the scope, that is the scope of the update itself. How much do you want us to do? What level of effort are you looking for in some of the different issues that we've identified in the the agenda bill that's in your packet? And I believe we're starting it around page three sixty. Is that right? Three sixty, two sixty, somewhere in there. We're also going to talk a little bit about resources. So the purpose of tonight is not any specific action by the council. We're really looking for some direction from the council on those items we've identified in the questions at the end of your packet. And that's to give us some guidance so that we can put together more specific budget proposals that will come back to you as part of that budget discussion. So there's a few key issues that we're going to touch on. We'll also talk a bit about the schedule this evening and what we have envisioned for that. And I do have a couple of breaks in the presentation, so there'll be some opportunities for questions as we go through that. So a little bit of background, I think everyone's familiar with the Growth Management Act that was passed by the legislature back in the nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety. It's been. Amended just about every year since, but it it requires that we have an update completed, this periodic update, which we're now required to do every ten years. And we now have until December thirty first rather than June thirtieth of twenty twenty four to get that done. We've got an extra six months. Thank you. Representative Duer for that. We appreciate that. The last periodic update of the plan was in two thousand fifteen. So things have changed since then. We've seen a lot of change, not just in Bothell, but in the region. Issues have changed. They've become more intense in some cases. So it contains all the goals and policies and. That informs the development regulations that we put in place. The Growth Management Act requires us to make sure that our regulations are consistent. With our policies that are in the comprehensive plan. So the two thousand fifteen Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan contains a vision statement that has nineteen statements in it. That really sets the the tone and the direction for the rest of the plan and all of the elements are in the plan. As well as the the scope and the direction of of the plan itself and what we're going to be doing in that update. So at this point, in looking over those nineteen statements, there are a few in there that we've discussed in the agenda memo. We think. Overall, that the 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 vision statements capture this, the direction that we're that we're still headed. With the community and that the council has given us direction in various conversations in the past, that those nineteen statements. Pretty well encapsulate where we want to go in the next twenty years as well with some modifications. There will be some tweaking that'll happen as we go through the process, but generally, we're still headed in the same direction. That's really one of the seminal questions that we have for the council tonight. If that's a true statement for you and you think that. We're still pretty much on the right path, then we won't spend as much time. Reworking the vision statement, we'll use that as the basis for how we move forward in the plan itself. If the council wants to rewrite the vision statement and the community says, we don't think that's where we are or where we want to go. We're starting from scratch. That's a much larger effort and and a lot more resources are needed for that. And we would revamp the schedule and the scope and the budget to reflect that. So part of what we're going to do to start this process is first look at. Where are we now relative to our two thousand fifteen plan? How well have we done? How much have we implemented in terms of the actions? Are those still relevant? We'll apply an equity lens that was not done back in two thousand fifteen. What are the policies that are in there that may be discriminatory in 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 their in their language or in their in their outcomes? We want to know where we're starting from, so we have a better idea of where we need to to put the the work in to. Bring it up to date with everything that we're trying to do. And then where do we have some inconsistencies with our development regulations? If we've made some amendments to our code. Maybe we don't have policies that support that. We're not necessarily inconsistent. We just don't have the policy framework for it. So we're going to look and see where we have those gaps. There are mandatory elements. These are the, these are the things that the Growth Management Act requires us to do. And requires all cities and counties that plan under the Growth Management Act. We're required to have these elements in our plan. Land use is the foundation. And we start with our growth targets. We've talked to the council in the in the past few months about the growth targets that we have. From King County as well as Snohomish County as a core city. We have a significant amount of the growth that we're going to be taking in the community. Overall, we have pretty good capacity for that, but we will need to look at where we might want to add some capacity for future growth. Even beyond what we're looking at in the targets, understanding that because of our position in the region, because of the. The attractiveness of Bothell and what we've experienced so far, we're likely to pass our growth targets and. There's nothing wrong with planning for a little bit more to be prepared for that. Our main growth centers are still going to be downtown and Canyon Park. We've identified in the two thousand fifteen plan several activity centers of different. Different levels, different. Sizes and and levels of importance in terms of growth. Do we want to apportion some more growth to those areas? In addition to downtown and Canyon Park. For example, we are looking at Bus Rapid Transit on I four oh five coming online in the next few years. One of the stops is at Brickyard. That's an opportunity potentially for transit oriented development in the future. Do we want to put some additional? Growth there to take advantage of that. That would be consistent with what we've talked about. In our plan and consistent with what we've done in the downtown as well as Canyon Park. Not talking about the same scale or the same size or intensity necessarily. But certainly building upon more than what's there right now. Similarly, we're looking at the extension of the the green line for Swift of community transit coming down. The Bothell Everett Highway, once that project is done and connecting Canyon Park with downtown and the and the campus. We're likely to see a. A bus rapid transit stop or center near two fortieth and the Bothell Everett Highway. That's what's referred to as the Red Barn. Village area in our comprehensive plan as part of the sub area. So those are just a couple of examples of where we might see some additional growth occurring. I should also mention that the Red Barn Village area as well as the downtown are what we're calling our countywide growth centers. So these are at a little smaller scale than a regional growth center. And these are designated at the county level. This is a new new mechanism that was put in place through Vision twenty fifty. The downtown is already a candidate center, and we need to do some additional planning for the downtown in order for that to to actually be officially designated. Similarly, with Red Barn and Snohomish County portion. That's important because of of the funding, regional transportation funding. There's a certain pot of that money that's set aside for countywide projects, and those countywide centers will be more competitive for those dollars. If they have that designation. Similarly, we have a housing element that is required by the by the Growth Management Act. We combined the Housing and Human Services. Elements in two thousand fifteen plan. They don't have to be combined. There was, I'm sure, a very good reason for doing that at the time. Human services is not a required element of the comprehensive plan. I suspect that combination was made because of the interrelationship. Between housing and human services and the policies that tend to to intertwine and overlap a little bit. We have a quite a bit amount of work to do on the housing element this year because of legislation that was passed, not this last session, but in the in the twenty one session. House Bill twelve twenty really lays out specifically additional requirements that all jurisdictions that are planning under the GMA. Will need to do as part of their, part of their update. We'll have to look at displacement displacement potential, for example, getting at some gentrification issues. Not only a a housing target, but housing targets at different income affordability levels. There will be some targets that will be set overall for affordability at the countywide level. So all of that comes into play in in our housing and all that obviously feeds into the land use as well. Missing middle housing, I don't need to talk about that. We're already working on that and there's quite a bit of conversation we've already had with the city council about that. The human services element I mentioned. I know this is a, this is a question that we're posing to the council tonight because human services has become. Much greater topic of discussion with the council over the the past year or so. Certainly, since the pandemic started, there's been a lot more attention to human services and those needs. So whether or not the council would like to elevate that to its own element. Separate it out from housing or beef it up within the housing and human services element. The location isn't as important as how much effort do you want us to put into that human services component of the comprehensive plan. Our economic development element, again, looking at those activity centers, again, look a little more closely, what type of. Of development we want to see there, really beefing up the the plan in our policies in terms of the life sciences and medical devices. Sectors, employment sectors that we have, especially in Canyon Park. There was a recent article in the Puget Sound Business Journal that identified the top thirty five biotech companies in the region. The top three all have a presence in Bothell. Two of those are headquartered in Bothell. So that's a very important part of not only Bothell's economy, but the regional economy and in Snohomish County in particular, because as I've mentioned before. Canyon Park is one of only three regional growth centers in Snohomish County, and that's obviously a critical part of the city and our growth, but also for this region. Looking at how can we increase the jobs downtown to create a little bit more activity in the downtown during the day. Create more of that twenty four hour activity area. We were doing pretty good on the residential side of things. We're seeing, you know, quite a bit of growth there. We'd like to see more jobs come into the downtown as well, and that becomes important as part of that countywide center designation too. And then looking at how we fit with the overall regional economic strategy, this is the Puget Sound Regional Council's. Four county strategy for economic growth and and where Bothell fits into that, and certainly life sciences and medical devices are a part of it. So at this point, I'm going to ask Boyd Benson from Public Works to talk about our capital facilities element.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Can you folks hear me okay? Okay, so I'll be giving you a brief overview of the capital facilities and utility element updates. Up to these elements includes a baseline understanding of what's out there right now, existing facilities and how it serves the city. We'll also look at what actions, goals and policies are going to be needed to accommodate growth. The updates also for these elements are updated with respect to regulatory requirements and city council and vision. So the capital facilities on itself includes city facilities such as city hall, police, fire parks and city utilities. It also includes schools, libraries and the North Shore sewers. The update will build on existing work, including the capital facilities plan, utility plans and other planning documents. We'll be looking at a few areas of special interest in utilities, and that includes existing and upcoming federal stormwater regulations. And also utility considerations with respect to the environment, climate change, resiliency, equity and affordability. We also may be looking at such topics as sewer and stormwater impacts on environmental health and heat sound. And optimal water supply with respect. This does include fire, police parks and general facilities, and so as part of the smoking effort, we'll be looking at specific issues to. Investigate for those facilities as well. Next slide, please, Mike. For the utilities element, this is just non-city utilities and services. So the the city's utility services are within the capital facility. So we're talking about electricity, national, natural gas, telecommunications, garbage, and such facilities. And this is a pretty minor update of this element. It's basically a research and coordination exercise with the. Area service providers to make sure that we understand what's out there now and to understand that these services can expand to address. and to understand that these services can expand to address, uh, increased services with respect. And that's what I have for these two elements.
Next, Steve Markow is going to talk about the transportation element. Thank you, Boyd.
So, good evening, everybody. Uh, in the transportation element, there's a lot of work to be done. Um, there's two slides just for transportation as an example. Um, the transportation element will be coordinated with the other elements, especially in terms of supporting land use and connectivity. So essentially moving people. One of the things that I know I have to keep reminding myself when I think about our transportation system though is that it doesn't just include moving people. We need to make sure we consider the necessary transport of freight as well as goods, um, both locally and regionally, which is important to everybody and is important in terms of ensuring economics, uh, sustainability. One of the questions in terms of scope that staff is going to ask you about the transportation element is whether you support moving the level of service methodology for the transportation system from vehicle based to multimodal. This will be a big lift, but it's very important in terms of providing alternative transportation choices. Um, there is no one way to do multimodal level of service. Um, some agencies in Puget Sound have switched to this and they do it differently. So we will have to identify options and then obtain a consensus on a methodology prior to moving forward. So when we do that, then we'll measure to make sure that we can support the land use vision and the changes in the, um, comprehensive plan. Another reason changing the level of service methodology is important is for concurrency. So currently we collect transportation impact fees for developments for addressing vehicular traffic. Um, and improving our vehicular capacity to meet growth's needs. But what we want to do is extend that to alternative transportation modes to help fund our total transportation system, not just a vehicular aspect. We will coordinate the overall vision of the plan for climate change and environment. Um, climate change in the transportation often is greenhouse gases. Um, but it also means addressing potential unfortunate aspects of climate change, such as the fact that rainstorms, for example, um, of a hundred year intensity are starting to come more often, not just every hundred years. Um, so we need to adjust to that and that kind of leads us to the resiliency aspect of the transportation system. As an example, we may need to make sure we understand what's happening during those, um, big storm events and how they affect their bridges, because they'll be more frequent and they may be higher level storm events. Another example of resiliency is that while we may not be on the coast and have to worry about things like, um, the rise of sea level, um, we do have to worry about, um, traditional things like potential seismic events and what our lifeline routes would be for supplies in the case of a seismic event. Um, this may mean identifying key routes and it also might mean identifying a redundant route as well. We will also follow the vision of the overall comp plan in terms of equity and accessibility. Um, more specifically equity for transportation often means ensuring that everyone has access to the multimodal transportation system. It can also mean ensuring that in creating a system, for example, in building a project, we're not impacting communities in equitable. Safety is always a concern of ours and will continue to be our priority and we will strive to do our part to reach target zero. The Puget Sound Regional Council has also put more weight into maintaining our infrastructure, protecting our investment in our infrastructure. Um, we've started to do this in our capital facility plan and budgeting by identifying operating and maintenance costs, um, upfront when we do projects. And we'll have to make sure to include this in our overall planning strategy. We have to try to allocate the right amount of resources to provide adequate maintenance so our infrastructure can last in its most economical way or efficient way to do that. But we also need to be smart in developing ways to reduce the amount of maintenance needs, um, overall. Transportation technology, um, this includes not only incorporating existing technologies such as adaptive signal control, but it's also means being flexible to potential new technology. Um, things are always changing and we have to kind of be flexible to account for taking advantage of opportunities that are coming on the horizon. So the staff is excited to move forward with this transportation scope. Um, the items I just described, they align with the Puget Sound Regional Council 2050 vision. And the region as a whole is kind of moving in this direction. Um, and while we're excited to tackle this, it is a big lift and we're going to need adequate resources to accomplish it. But one thing I would like to also stick in your mind from a purely economic practical side, um, investing in this planning now helps set us up for competing well in transportation grants in the future as well. We only get funded as well as we compete project wise. And this entire list that you see in front of you, transportation wise, typically shows up in the federal grant competitions as scoring points in each of these categories. So the more we can prepare for ourselves upfront, um, which will probably require more resources, it enables us to compete better for money in the future in terms of grants. Uh, Michael, back to you, I guess.
Thank you, Steve. So the, the five that we've just highlighted, the five elements we've just talked about, uh, when the Growth Management Act was passed in 1990 and through most of the 1990s, those were the five required elements. Uh, they're the original five. Transportation of those five transportation, the, the language in the Growth Management Act is the most descriptive, prescriptive when it comes to transportation, uh, because they recognize the importance of that to achieve the land use uh, element, the land use plan, the future vision, uh, that was, that's the foundation of, of the rest of the plan. Housing is now a close second to that with the recent legislation in terms of what's prescribed by state law. Uh, the transportation is a, is a, a, a key part of all of this. So at, at this point, I'm going to stop sharing for a minute and see if there are any questions so far.
Yeah, I got my, I, I got first in line because I know there's going to be lots of questions and, and wanted to, uh, get first in line before we got you totally exhausted. And hopefully I won't be the person who does that. Um, Steve and Mike and Boyd, you, you guys are the best and I appreciate so much what you've brought to Bothell, even if we only have a piece of it until what, May? Piece of the team until May. So thank you, thank you for this. Um, I have a few questions and then you want us to weigh in on those, on, on your questions, right?
We'll, we'll come to back to those at the end of the presentation. We have, we have some more to go through before we get to the.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
So if you have, so at this point, we're just asking if there are any questions and we'll present it so far. Is there anything you'd like to clarify or any questions you have about that?
Okay. So well, I'll, I'll save, I think I'll save the, some of my questions for later. Um, but right now, if we just stick with these originals at 19 points and do some edits about how many hours or how long of a time do you think we're going to be doing just as it stands now?
Uh, well, if, if the council, um, affirms the, the staff suggestion that we're pretty, we think we're pretty close with the ones that we have, we'll just do some tweaking. That'll be done through the process when we go out to the public. Uh, so we'll have some discussions with the council, with the planning commission, but also, but primarily with the community and say, this is the vision that was created back in 2015. The council has said this is, they think it's pretty consistent with where we are now. So we'll get some feedback on those, um, and that will come then throughout the process. We'll refine that.
And then that will kind of tell you how much work you have to do.
Well, to, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question. So, so you're asking how much effort do we need to put into?
Right. Start from this point, you know, from where we've started until, you know, we've got it wrapped up about how much time do you think we're going to be investing in this?
If the council agrees, uh, with the, the staff's assessment that we're pretty close on that, I don't think there's going to be much time, uh, that'll be involved in that. The, the main reason for the question to the council is we want to make sure that, that staff's understanding and assessment is accurate. Because if the council is of an opinion that the vision statement doesn't really reflect where you think we are or where we want to go, then we would have to put a lot more time and effort into that community engagement and have a lot more discussion about the vision itself.
Okay. It'll be a whole other kettle of fish, so to speak.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to waste time finding questions that are apropos for here. I'll just, what questions I have, I'll save for, for later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you all for a great presentation. And, uh, since we're at this topic, I have some questions about this stuff that we've presented. Uh, human services was integrated in 2015 and, uh, but it's optional. Uh, is that a community development? Like which department does, does this human services go under usually? Or is it supposed to be?
Uh, well, that's, that's a great question, Deputy Mayor. Right now, it's not under any department. Uh, I think most of it has been done. Some of it's been done out of community development in the past. I think, uh, more of it's been done lately out of the executive office. Uh, but it's not really assigned to any particular department in the city and it, there are different places it can reside. I, I'd say there's probably no one right answer to that.
That's fair, because I feel like it has to be called out explicitly, given coming out of the pandemic, the, the need to focus on that. Um, it isn't related to, uh, housing, but it's also related to transportation. It's also related to a lot of other things, uh, utilities and, you know, public works. So it's related to everything. So I feel like it needs to perhaps be called out explicitly and separately. And, uh, one thing, uh, I wanted to ask is about, uh, I know in transportation, Steve mentioned, uh, there's a climate action component towards this. What I was going to ask, is there something with it, climate action related stuff that will be called out as far as, as part of the land use buildings, all that stuff, like for example, actually that we heard earlier today, uh, from public comment, like electrification of new buildings, for example, you know?
So right now there are some, uh, climate, um, climate change policies and greenhouse gas reduction policies in the plan. They're in the natural environment element. Uh, there are some other, um, climate related policies that reside in some of the other, um, some of the other elements that we've talked about. I think there's some utilities, for example. So it's not addressed extensively and, uh, that's one of the questions that we have for the, the council this evening. We've got some more slides a little bit later about that as well.
Yeah, and I'll ask questions about the other components and I'll leave the climate stuff to the resident expert, council member doer. So I yield my time.
Speaking of, council member doer.
Well, if it's, if we're going to have a conversation later, I'm happy to have that conversation. I have a few thoughts about it. Um, as far as human services, I mean, I, I agree with, uh, Deputy Mayor Alcabra that it's important, it needs to be there. I guess we have to weigh the cost of pulling it out from where it currently exists in housing. I mean, and whether, how much that changes its priority and, and whatnot. Um, it does make a certain amount of sense to me that it goes in the housing because there is a nexus there. So I guess I would look to staff for their recommendation. I felt like you provided us what's currently there, but not necessarily recommendations. So I would be interested in, um, a recommendation. Um, the other thing that I would comment on, and maybe this is later too, I'm getting confused kind of where we're at, but the, the bullet points, um, I, there are two thoughts that I have about the current, I don't know what they're called, these bullet points, our vision. Um, one thought is that there's no, uh, that this overall single family residential character, um, to me seems a little outdated when we know, and I think we have a lot of council, uh, support for really getting at middle housing and affordable housing. So to say that that's the priority feels a little outdated as far as priorities. Um, we know that we can't house everyone on that model. Um, and so I'd be interested to see what the rest of council thinks, but I mean, if we're talking about affordable housing, both, you know, for low, low income and also market rate, which you lower housing costs by creating more housing and more types of housing. I think that should be conveyed. Um, to me, I think climate change needs to be addressed. I don't see anything here in here to talk specifically about climate change. It's nice that we talk about protecting and preserving natural, the natural environment, but climate change is its own entity, separate and above just protecting the natural environment. It, to me, addressing climate change is something that's very proactive, not just reactionary and, you know, soft protecting, because what we're really talking about is stopping it in its tracks and then dealing with the resiliency element of climate change. So addressing what we've already, the damage that has already been done, um, not, not making it worse and then not making it worse. And so I think those are the two comments I would have about that, that vision. Um, sorry if it's not in the right timeframe. I'm a little bit confused in what we're supposed to comment on just now.
That's okay. We'll take comments as we get them. That, that's helpful. It just to, if I could real, real quick, try to, um, give a little bit of feedback on, on both of those. So in terms of the vision statement, uh, you're absolutely right. That's one of the 19 that, um, that I sort of identified as well, that, you know, would need some refinement based on the discussions that we've had about middle housing and, and where the council wants to go with that. And I think there probably will be some other statements in there that we'll want to do some, some modifications to. But we, we're asking about the overall context and the overall direction that's provided in those vision statements. Um, you know, our, our assessment from staff is that for the most part, they're pretty close to, uh, we think what the council has been, has, has discussed and the direction that the city has been going. And we don't see a need to, to do a lot of substantive revisions to those, you know, refine them, update them. Um, and even the one that you, that you referenced, uh, council member doer about, you know, the single family. It talks about single family character. So it's, it's not necessarily saying it, it sort of implies that it's all single family housing. Uh, but there may be some, just some simple language changes that we can do that, that keeps the intent of the single family character and applies that a little bit differently. That's just one example, but again, we're not trying to rewrite those this evening, uh, but the overall direction, uh, of the vision statement.
No, that's helpful and I, I've got it. Yeah, I think there's tweaking and then just my memory from having been peripherally involved in, in watching the comp plan update last time, I felt like there was a deliberate attempt, there was a deliberate attempt to remove language around climate change. Um, and using those words. So that's something that I certainly am, uh, in favor of really addressing head on, naming it, saying what it is and what we need to do to address it. Um, because I think there was a different group of people and, and, uh, with different, um, priorities and they did not, they purposely um, avoided that language from, from my memory. So thanks.
And I wasn't here for that, but just reading through that element, I had that sense. It talks about the theory of climate change and that regardless of the cause, it's something that, you know, we need to talk about. So I kind of gleaned that, that was the discussion at the time. Uh, and right now the, the policies that we have, they're just a handful of policies, uh, and, you know, the, the, they're probably fine as far as they go, but they don't, they don't come anywhere near addressing some of the other things that, that the council has talked about. Uh, and that's, and we want to talk some more about that with the council this evening. It's just how far do you want us to go? Uh, I'm assuming you want us to go farther than what's in there right now, but just how far do you want us to go is, is sort of the question. Um, you mentioned, uh, there's no recommendation about, you know, whether to, to split the, the human services back in, you know, to its own element, separate from housing. There really is no right answer to that. Um, we can, we can include it still in housing because I think there is a nexus, as you said. Uh, it could be its, its own element because it does inter, interact with other aspects of the plan as, as the deputy mayor talked about as well. So it doesn't really matter where it resides. Uh, the question is really, how much do you want us to elevate that? How much effort do you want us to put into creating a more robust human services? Either component of that element or its own element. So, uh, that's, that's the question there and we can talk some more about that when we get toward the, the end of the presentation.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Director Catterman, um, and, and Boyd and Steve for being here, for going through all of this. Um, I am trying to stay focused on questions because you asked for questions.
We'll tell the answers too, if you have answers.
We can share opinions all night long, right? Um, but I, I'm going to try to stay focused on, on questions. Um, so first up is human services. I would just very much like to know where, what are the options for where human services could reside? We've heard obviously housing, um, but we, we have a really. We've heard, obviously, housing, but we have a really robust human services system right now. I won't say a program, because it hasn't been optimized or strategized or planned. So we we are doing a lot, and it's a lot of good, I believe. And I just would really love to see what staff has to say about, you know, where we could optimize those services, where they are best situated, and how we can strategically plan for them going forward. Also, we have, we have the notes from the pick meeting for SCA, and in that packet, it talks about several items that have planning policies related to the comprehensive plan. And I'm wondering how many, how how much has staff done to kind of keep abreast of what those policies are and think about how they can be implemented in to our comprehensive plan? So those are specifically, hold on, I have notes kind of everywhere now. On local actions on climate change, affordable housing, planning policies, and the regional transportation plan. There's been a lot of really great collaboration from some cities association on these topics, both in terms of, you know, people taking these issues seriously and wanting to work regionally and collaborate together on them. And also recognizing that sometimes we have the opportunity to innovate and strengthen and and even model for the rest of our community, how we can best address some of the biggest challenges that our communities are facing, which leads me to my next question, which is if the comprehensive plan is a vision for the future, and we're talking about, you know, our children and our children's children. I would love to know, what are some moonshots? What are some things we can do that could very seriously take on the biggest challenges that that we know that our children are going to be facing? I would like to think that the moon here isn't the limit, you know, the whole reach for the stars thing. Let's see what we can do here to have a big impact, to show how much we care about our community and for the future, not just our planet, but designing a city where people can thrive and be healthy and and build intergenerational wealth and overcome the, you know, some of the inequities and injustices that they've experienced. So I just want to think big picture. I would just love some, like, give me some beautiful words of of what we could accomplish here. And then, because I always like to be pragmatic too, how implementable does the comprehensive plan have to be? Can we think big? Can we, can we have beautiful ideas in here? Can we set goals that maybe seem unreachable now and hope that, you know, we'll we'll work towards them clearly? But can we set some goals that that actually encourage our future selves, whoever sits in these chairs and does this work, to to reach for the best we can do? So I just want to go big picture and then ask. Then, you know, once you, once you get like a lofty goal, you can kind of work back and and figure out a way to approach it. So I'm I'm excited to be a part of this effort. This is the first time I've been on council to participate in a comprehensive plan to to be, you know, to dream a beautiful future for our community and for our children. And so I just really want to know how far we can take this. So how's that for some questions?
I'm I'm not sure I remember all of the questions, but I'll answer the last one. How's that? We'll start with that, and then maybe that'll inform some of the others. It's, it's the city's plan. It's the council's plan. You're the ones that will adopt this. So the vision can be whatever you want the vision to be. You can be as big and bold as you want to be, or, you know, purely pragmatic and and a little more cautious in your approach to what that what that future will be. We do have to have an implementation program that is realistic and that is defensible if the plan is challenged. So that's something to keep in mind. I think it's it's great to have, you know, big, bold vision. But we have to also lay out the the path to get there within that twenty years. It is a twenty-year plan, so it doesn't mean it's all going to be achieved right away. It'll also be revisited. We have to do a check-in in five years. We have to do an update in another ten years. Thanks for the check-in, too, Representative Doer. I think it's, it's, I I think it'll be very helpful for us to do that, particularly when you do a ten-year renewal. We can update it before that. If the council, you know, in in six years decides we want to go in a whole new direction, you can update the comprehensive plan at that time. So you have the ability to to do what you want to do with the plan. It's your plan. You know, and and it should reflect the the vision and the goals and the values of the community that you represent. So that's that's the, that's the bigger answer to your your question, and I'm not sure that I've answered your other questions as part of that. So you, you asked about human services. Where where could it reside? We can do as much or as little as you want with the the human services element. What we have right now really isn't an element. It's a few policies and a little bit of background. You know, we can, we can do much more in terms of the inventory of what's out there right now, but services are being provided and by whom? Because the city is doing some things, but there's a lot of other work that's being done in human services by other agencies, other entities, nonprofits, and and the like. It's kind of similar to what Boyd described for the utilities element. You know, there's a lot of utilities that are provided to the city service providers, that the city is not the provider of those services. But we still inventory those. We still make sure that we know about those and that we're coordinating with those efforts to really be efficient. So that's what I would envision as part of a human services element, whether it's its owner or part of the housing. And those are the only two that I remember. I'm sorry.
Pretty good. I did ask about the the SCA and pick plan policies.
Yes, yes, you did. So those are related to the housing element, and that's an outgrowth of House Bill twelve twenty and what's required in that. The King County in particular, the countywide planning policies for King County that you recently ratified lay out some specific things that we will, that we will need to do, and it's mostly in line with what's in twelve twenty. They're trying to go a little bit further, as I understand it. We have been tracking it, and we haven't been as involved in it, but we have been tracking it. And the the proposal is to go a little bit further and actually try to put in some accountability, some monitoring. They're creating a dashboard, or they have created the dashboard. I'm not sure how far along it is. But it will actually track the progress of of the county overall in terms of how we're meeting those affordable housing targets. And then provide for some adjustments in those efforts if we're not, if we're not coming closer, we're not, you know, on the right path to achieve those. So that's more a question of just, you know, how much how involved do we want the county to be in in our local housing efforts? You know, we're going to be working with them. They're going to be a good resource. Some of the other things that they're talking about go beyond, you know, what's required by twelve twenty. Does that answer some of your question, at least?
It does, and inspires more. I will write down, and you can come back to me.
Well, and I think some of the pick questions are really more of a policy decision on the part of the council, and, you know, whether whether you support the direction that that the county wants to go with some of the housing policies and how far they want to go with those in terms of certification and accountability and, you know, their version of reasonable measures. Reasonable measures are something that's in GMA right now, having to do with land use. If you're not achieving the targets, or you're not providing enough capacity, what can you do to to encourage more of that growth so that so that you're getting close to the targets? Those are what they call reasonable measures, so things that we can, we can do. But that's for for land use and meeting housing and job targets. So, you know, would they, could they do something similar for affordable housing in in particular? That's, that's another approach. But again, that's more of a, I think, a policy discussion for for elected officials.
Councilmember Doer.
Sorry to double dip. I wanted to ask Director Ketterman's interpretation of twelve forty-one and the five-year check-in, because when, when Councilmember Aldrich was talking about how aspirational we could be with that check-in, I mean, part of that five-year check-in, as I remember from the bill, is that we have to have implemented development regulations to achieve the goals. So there is a little bit of a I guess, a tempering of too much inspiration where we don't think we can actually follow through. Because if you're setting out a plan and then you're having a check-in at five years to make sure you've implemented the development regulations to make those goals achievable. If you haven't, then that creates more work for staff, because then it's one-year check-ins after that. But that's my interpretation. I just, it was just my bill, but I could, I don't know that it was written legally the way that as I interpret it. So I guess I'm I'm asking you, Director Ketterman, if that's your interpretation as well.
That that is, and that's why I said we also have to have a path. You can have the big, bold vision, but you have to have a path to get there. You have to show how you're going to get there. Or the 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 plan can be challenged. The development regulations, we have to make those consistent, and that's something we'll talk about in just a little bit. Those have to be consistent with our comprehensive plan when we adopt it. So, you know, we'll we'll have those in place. But the five, the way I interpreted council members, at that five years, we have, we also have to take a look at how have well have we done? You know, did we do everything we could? Did we do everything we said we would do within those five years to achieve where we wanted to be? Or, and you know, are we making enough progress toward the plan? If we say we're going to accommodate this much growth, and we've had that growth, but it hasn't been accommodated where we wanted it to go, then our plan is not working. It's not doing what we said it would do, and we need to make adjustments. And that could be changes in development regulations, changes in some of the zoning where we have those. You know, in terms of affordable housing, for example, you know, we have an MFT in place. That's part of our affordable housing strategy. If no one is using that in the next five years, we have to look at why, and we have to make some adjustments to that. I would hopefully would do that for the five years, but that's an example. So, so, yes, I, I certainly defer to your interpretation of your bill. But what I was trying to get across to to Councilmember Aldrich is it is the council's plan, and you can, you can be bold in in your vision with that. But but you're absolutely right. You have to have, you have to show how you can get there. It's not just a pie in the sky plan. There has to be a pragmatic and realistic way to achieve that within, within those twenty years, including those five-year check-ins. Are we ready to go back to the?
I see no other questions.
Okay. So now we're going to talk some about the optional elements, and this is where we get more into the climate change and resiliency question. And again, what we're asking for from the council this evening is some direction on just how far do you want us to go with with that, with an element on climate change? So we have a natural environment element. These are all optional under the Growth Management Act, but we have decided to include them. So we look at critical areas, floodplains, water quality, salmon habitat and recovery. And again, this gets at some legislation that did not pass in the last session. This was done seven years ago, so it'll be nine years old by the time we adopt the new plan. Obviously, there's a lot more that's happened since then. We would need to beef up the natural environment element. We've done a lot of that work already, and some of the other things that we've done, we've updated our shoreline master program, we've updated our critical areas regulations, we've done our best available science. So we're in pretty good shape there, but there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, I think, in terms of of some of our policies. And this all then ties back into the land use element as well, because obviously, the more we work on preserving through the natural environment element, we, you know, we look at that through our land use filter, and we may have some lands that are less developable than they would have been before. So we need to make sure we're accommodating that growth somewhere else. Another thing that's sort of touched upon in the natural environment element and a couple of other places that we might want to beef up as well is tree preservation. So that's something that I know is near and dear to to hearts of some of the council members. And we've got that in our docket to update the tree preservation regulations. We'll want to put some more robust policies in the comprehensive plan to provide that policy basis and framework to to support the the code changes that we're that we're going to be working on. Parks and Recreation should be fairly simple, because we have a pros plan that was adopted just a couple of years ago that we just need to figure out how best to integrate that into the comprehensive plan, because the the pros plan itself, it has to meet certain requirements in order to be eligible for funding. So the 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 content, the format is not necessarily compatible entirely with what we need for the comprehensive plan. It contains everything we need, but we need to make some adjustments to that to to actually integrate it into the comprehensive plan and also make sure that it's consistent across all of the other elements. You're going to hear consistency a lot when we talk about comprehensive plans. So we have to have internal consistency. In other words, we can't have conflicting policies in the various elements. We have to have consistency with the development regulations. The development regulations need to clearly implement the policies we have in the comprehensive plan. And we also be, have to be consistent in our plan with the countywide planning policies of St. Homish and King Counties, as well as Vision twenty fifty, as well as the growth management goals. Piece of cake. So other optional elements that we have are historic preservation element. Again, we need to update it because of the work that's been done over the last few years, and certainly integrating telling Boffles full story work that's, that's, that's getting underway. Urban design, this is another area the council's had some discussion about wanting to beef up some of our urban design standards and regulations. We would want to look at the policies there and see how we wanted to update those, how far we want to go with those, as well as where we would want those to apply. Annexation, looking through the annexation policies, we really don't anticipate that there's much change we need to do there. Again, probably updating a couple of references. But generally, it's saying, you know, the city will only annex within its urban growth area, or I'm sorry, within its municipal urban growth area, our MOOGA, that, you know, will will annex those areas when they're ready to be annexed, will be consistent in terms of service provision. Mostly fairly standard language and and don't necessarily see a reason to to do a lot of, a lot of updating there. Other optional elements are the subarea plans. We have seventeen subareas in the city. Obviously, we have put a lot of focus into the two main ones that we have, our growth areas of Canyon Park and downtown, which you see here on the screen. So those are, are, those are in fairly good shape. We need to do some more on the downtown plan, simply because of the countywide center designation. So there's some things that are required as part of that designation. We'll need to incorporate into the downtown subarea. But otherwise, it's in, it's in pretty good shape. We'll look at, you know, how we accommodate additional growth there. Likewise, in Canyon Park, that was just adopted about a year, less than a year and a half ago. So shouldn't be a whole lot more to do there, but we'll make sure that anything that's changed in the overall comprehensive plan is reflected in the policies of of those subareas, because, again, consistency. So the next few slides are not about elements per se, but these are tasks that we need to do as part of the comprehensive plan update that are integral to that effort. So the whole diversity, equity, and inclusion effort that the city is undertaking and the work that we're doing there. I mentioned earlier, we're going to evaluate the existing plan through that lens to see where we need to to make changes. All of the new stuff that we do will also go through that lens, and there's some tools out there that we have been, we've been exploring and learning about. The equity policies that are in the multi, multi-county planning policies or MPPs and the countywide planning policies or CPPs. So again, being consistent with those, as well as integrating anything that comes out of the city's DEI plan, incorporating that into the comp plan as well. So that's an important task, and that goes along with our community engagement plan. We want to make sure that we're, that we're engaging with those traditionally underrepresented communities and and working on that. Sarah Frost, our community engagement specialist, has been investigating different platforms that we can use to improve our our outreach efforts. And she has some narrowed that down. We're hopefully selecting one of those very soon, and we'll get started. Want to start with an educational program, just to let people know what the comp plan is and what it's about, why it's important and why they should care. We'll work on soliciting feedback on various points throughout the process. There'll be an ongoing effort with a few milestones where we really want to make sure that we go out and engage the community on things like developing those land use alternatives, you know, looking at how the missing middle housing approach will integrate into the into the neighborhoods that we have. We'll also be sharing the feedback that we've heard from the community as we go through this. It's important that they understand they've been heard, and we talked about how we have used that input. And if we haven't used it, why haven't we used it? You know, what what was the reasoning for that? So it's it's closing the loop on that part of it. We also have to do environmental review. A lot of what we have in the plan is talking about environment. Uh, even outside of the natural environment element, you know, we talk about. Um, there are actually policies in the transportation element already, about multimodal and reducing trips and. And other things that, that fit in with the conversations we've had about climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, but we still have to do an environmental review under the State Environmental Policy Act. And so we have an environmental impact statement that was done for the previous plan. What we will do is what's called a supplement to that. So we're not doing a whole new um, environmental document. Uh, but we're doing what's, we're doing an analysis of what has changed, what's different. Uh, and we're gonna have some areas of significant change. So the supplement. In some respects will be almost like an, an entirely new E I S, but we're gonna use the old one. To the extent that we can and not have to duplicate that effort. And as I've mentioned before, we need to update the development regulations. We often overlook this or, or in terms of when we discuss the comp plan update. But this is also a critical piece of it that's required by the G M A. So when you adopt the comprehensive plan. On December whatever, twenty twenty-four. Um, you'll also be adopting the development regulation amendments that will go with that, that bring those into alignment with, with the new policies and comprehensive plan. Another piece of that, that's part of that whole development regulation package of the design and construction standards. Um, that those are, those are actually amended administratively, uh, but those have the, the public works standards, for example, of streets and sidewalks and. Help me, Boyd. I, I just went blank on everything that's in there, but it's, it's, it's all. It's what?
All sorts of good stuff.
All sorts of good stuff. Thank you. That's the technical uh, description of it, so. So I'm gonna, unless there are any particular questions, I'm just gonna quickly go through. I'm looking at the time here. I'm gonna quickly go through the schedule. Uh, just to give you an idea, I'm not gonna read through all of these, but just to let you know. We've, we're laying out a schedule. Obviously, this needs to be refined and we'll make some adjustments as we go through it, but we've been working on this. Since actually before the first quarter of this year. Uh, right now, we're, we're in Q two and we're looking at just, you know, getting ready to launch our public education and involvement platform. Uh, putting together some internal staff teams that will be involved in doing all of this update. Uh, one of the reasons that I'm really glad that Steve and Boyd are here tonight, it's. Public Works is obviously a, a key part of all of this effort, but they're not the only other department that's gonna be involved in this. Parks will be involved, finance will be involved. Um, police and fire will be involved to a certain extent. Um, legal obviously will be very involved as we go through this process. Uh, so it, it in, involves almost every department in the city. Uh, and we, we will be engaging and have ongoing staff groups that'll be working on their respective areas. Uh, Steve mentioned earlier about the transportation, uh, that needs to get started before the land use uh, work. So they'll be issuing an R F P for a transportation consultant in the third quarter and then getting them under contract. We'll probably go out for an R F P in the fourth quarter, once we know what our budget's going to be. Uh, for the, the comp plan update for the next couple of years, so that we have that consultant onboard. First thing in twenty twenty-three to really get going uh, full bore on, on all of the work. Public scoping in the third quarter, that's just one example of one of those benchmarks for public engagement. Developing the land use alternatives, this is really the key. We'll need to, we need to show at least one alternative that will. Uh, accommodate the, the growth targets that we have. We'll have one that's probably just a continuation of, of the. It current plan, the, the no action alternative, if you will. And then we'll have one that's maybe that big bold uh, vision that Councilmember Alderks talked about. Uh, in the urban three work that's being done, we should have that sometime this summer, so that will actually um, help to inform the work that we do. Uh, there'll be some more discussions with council, obviously, around that. Ongoing public engagement, doing a draft. Uh, doing the analysis, the transportation analysis, the utility modeling. Uh, the uh, testing of the alternatives and developing a draft supplemental E I S. And then in twenty-four is when we really get into the whole adoption process. So we're wrapping up. Uh, the preferred alternative, doing the final supplemental E I S. The commission will make a recommendation. They're playing a huge role in this. They're gonna be very busy for the next couple of years and most of their time is gonna be spent on comp plan. Not all of it, but a lot of it. And then council adoption in the fourth quarter of twenty-four. So now to talk a little bit about resources. Uh, so these are the areas where we think we're gonna need. Uh, the, the greatest amount of, of resources. And resources, we mean, we mean money, we mean dollars for consultants and uh. And also in some cases, probably additional staff uh, in our, in our respective departments. So land use is a big lift, obviously, looking at all of that. Uh, the urban three is part of that. Uh, work and that will feed into the, uh, the alternatives that we develop and the analysis that we do. Uh, transportation utilities, I'll let Steve um, and Boyd talk about that a little bit more. Community engagement, you know, we have some capacity in-house, but we don't have the capacity in-house that we, that we need. To really do the, uh, the amount of community engagement that's necessary to make this um, a really. Well, uh, well-rounded and, and um. Uh, fully fleshed out plan for, that the public can, can get behind. The environmental analysis that I mentioned. And then the little triangle here, you know, the, the, the variables that we have are scope, cost and time. Time is not so much a variable because we know what our timeframe is. You know, we have, um, we have less than. Little over two and a half years uh, to get this done. That sounds like a lot of time, but there's an awful lot of work that goes into this. So that's why we wanna talk to the council tonight about the scope. And just how much effort you want us to put into each of these areas that we've talked about, cause that will drive the cost. And the cost then, how much, you know, resources we can get will um, drive the quality, uh, what we end up with there. So these are the rough numbers that we have. Uh, these are just our best guess at this point, uh, making some assumptions about how much. Um, the council may want us to do in these areas. W- when we get your direction this evening, then we will work on those more detailed budget proposals that we'll come and talk to you about as part of the budget process. So we're not asking for a commitment on budget tonight. We're not asking for, uh, for you to, to give us a, a decision. Uh, we're really just looking at that broader direction so we can uh, give you better information. And then these are the questions that we have for you that are in the um, in the agenda bill as well. So the vision statement we've talked about, do we, we capture the general direction for the periodic update? We're not looking at a wholesale rewrite. Um, but you know, we want you to tell us, uh, you know, how much work do you want us to put into that? Should the activity centers have a little bit more of the growth that we're looking at? And so go above and beyond what we've done in the past, cause we really didn't allocate much to them in the past. Housing and Human Services, we've talked about as well. Uh, this one is on the climate change. I know this is a, a big issue for the council. We've had some discussions about this. Sort of laying out a range here, you know, we can start with what we have and just build on that and go to a certain point. Uh, where we know it's gonna make a difference, or we can use ten ninety-nine uh, as our template. To say this is the work program that we'll, that we'll put together, and obviously there's more cost involved with that. But it's a framework, it's a, you know, it's a guide that would tell us um, what you want us to do on, on the comprehensive plans front. I also mentioned the Climate Action Plan and a couple of speakers spoke about this earlier as well. Uh, that's sort of a separate effort, and we've talked about that with the K four C, uh, once we join K four C, that's something that they're looking for us to do. Uh, that we need and want to do, uh, but that's an additional uh, cost, uh, consultant help. That will again, inform the work we do on the comprehensive plan, but it's really a more detailed, specific action plan as to the things that the city will do. Uh, in a year by year basis. So we think that's something should be done, but there'll be a separate budget proposal for that. Just understand that. Whichever direction you go with the climate, um, the climate change and resiliency element, however far you want us to go, that would be a part of that. Um, that effort as well and, and work with that. And then finally, um, the, the issue that Steve raised about multimodal level of service. And uh, whether we go in that direction uh, with this update. So with that. Little bit longer presentation time than I had intended, but hopefully gave you enough to, to give you some. Information to give us some feedback that we can then. Work with on a budget proposal.
Councilmember Duer.
I don't have questions. I actually am ready to launch into answering. My take on those five questions, or I guess it's four, cause I answered the first one. Um, I, I think if I remember, the first one was activity centers. Um, yes, to some degree, I think we should um, put growth there. And as much as we can put middle housing there, so that type of growth. Um. Three, what was three?
Three was the human services. The first one was about the vision statement, and I think we've.
Yeah.
I think we're on, on track with that, when the second one was about um, the growth, the activity centers. Third one's about. The human services element versus a, a housing and human services element.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't really have a, I guess I don't have a strong opinion about that, because I don't know. If what our plans are merits, a separate element. Um, so I really, I guess.
Let me reframe the question, cause I, I think I probably didn't frame it very well to begin with. I, I. I put it in there more because I know this is something the council has talked about, but I think the real question is. How, how robust do you want the human services piece of that to be, whether it's its own element or part of the housing element? I'm assuming the council wants more than what we have right now, which is just a handful of policies. So the, the, I think the real question is, how much do you want in terms of a human services element?
It's tricky because it's a chicken and egg thing, right, with budget? Um, so more, and I think, you know, I don't know if, does, does something like. Creating the community court and restorative justice fall into that category and would that be included? In the comp plan, or is that something wholly different? I'm, I'm not quite, I don't have a handle on that.
Um, and unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for you on that. I would say it could.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know that necessarily would. It, it, cause it's sort of going on its own path right now too. But I would say at the very least, it would be part of the inventory that we would do. Uh, so if you think of it in terms of like we, like we have for um. Capital facilities element, for example, we do, first we do an inventory. This is what we have. Um, and then this is what, what we want to do. So this is the additional, there's sort of a level of service that goes with that. There's actually a policy in the, in the um, human services. Policies right now that talk about a per capita amount, that the city should have a per capita amount. It doesn't name a dollar amount.
Well, we, we know that currently it's, we pay, we use the eight dollar per resident amount, correct?
I believe so, yes, but, but it's not specified in the policy and it doesn't necessarily have to be specified in the policy. Uh, but there's not much more than that in terms of how much the city will do toward human services, other than coordinate and support, you know, what others are doing. So.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's tricky because we're, we're doing a pilot program, but we don't yet know how we're paying for it.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I guess I'm gonna defer to time on that one and maybe uh. Yes, we need more than we currently have, so ever, however that looks. Um, I guess I would look to staff for, for. Help on that one.
Well, and, and the other thing that's, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, but.
The other thing that, that this will do, the, the way the process, I envision the process working at least, is that. Uh, if you give us direction tonight, for example, that you want, I'll use climate change, um, cause I know that's something you have a, a passing interest in, at least Councilmember Duer. Um, if you give us the direction tonight that you want us to do a climate change and resiliency element that follows everything that was in. House Bill ten ninety-nine, then we would develop a budget proposal of what it would take for us to do that. And we bring that budget proposal back to you and it's, say it's three million dollars. I'm just, I'm, I'm exaggerating, obviously, but you know, let's say it's just. Totally out of, out of our, our budget range. At that point, then, you know, the council can say, okay, well, then we need to scale that back. Uh, cause we're not gonna be able to fund all of that. So we, we would still be able to change the scope at that point, but at least we have an idea at this point. How far you want us to go and we can, we can start down that path and, and come up with those budget proposals. Does that help?
It, it does, cause it's iterative, right? I mean, I guess the answer is it's iterative. So, um, I guess with that, I would say, yeah, we should. I don't think we should compromise from the outset. So yeah, let's go for its own element and see where we go with it and. What it might cost and what we might achieve, and then we can always scale back. Um, so that's my answer on human services. I have a whole prepared set of remarks around climate change, so brace yourselves. Um. I obviously think we should implement ten ninety-nine, and here are the reasons why. A climate action plan is actually a lesser version of ten ninety-nine. Um, ten ninety-nine lays out, basically commerce is already doing the work. We, it's already been budgeted. They're putting their team together to put together what those menu of items are that cities can choose from. In order to reduce their greenhouse gases and vehicle miles traveled. So. The reason A W C supports that, supported ten ninety-nine is because we have a, a plan, but. The cities have the option to choose how they intend to implement and make those reductions. So. No one's having to do anything. They're, they, they get to choose from a menu, which we know will include things like. Middle housing, um, but also, you know, salmon recovery and possibly tree retention. And there are a whole, you know, electrification. There's going to be a bunch of um, things to choose from. So, cause I, I know now everyone knows what's in ten ninety-nine. Um, the second piece um, of the two major parts is resiliency, which we've already talked about. And there, commerce is developing a model code. That means we get to adopt the code. We get some sort of safe harbor and staff doesn't have to develop our own code to deal with res- resiliency. Another reason why the cities um, supported that, because it, it saves money and, you know, coming from local government, I get. The need for that. I would say ten ninety-nine also hits on. Three of our biggest priorities as council, one being climate change, two being environmental justice. There's a whole section in there on environmental justice, looking at health disparities maps to understand where we're putting development in. And trying to shift the burden from communities of color, communities that traditionally are not represented. And, and um, we know that that D E I is a huge priority of ours at the local level. Three. Which is the answer to your fifth question is level of service, level of services also in ten ninety-nine around transportation and multimodal transportation. So we're hitting on all, a lot of things that are already priorities for us. In addition, I would say there will be state dollars. There are grant dollars that are gonna be available to cities that voluntarily choose. To adopt ten eighty-nine, which is also gonna help us pay for our priorities and what we wanna do. So I feel like. It's a win, 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 win. And potentially, there's talk about. King County dollars to also help support um, that planning for ten ninety-nine. Um, in addition, K four C is talking about potentially making that one of their priorities. So we know that we can't, we have already discussed that we can't really afford. And it hasn't been in the budget for us to implement any of the, the things that K four C is doing. But if K four C is also talking about ten ninety-nine, it's yet another thing that we can get grant dollars. To do that hits on our priorities. And so I just don't think. There's, there's no loss here. It hits on many of our priorities. It probably will not cost us. Um, nearly as much money as if we tried to do our own separate climate action plan. So much of the work will be done by the state. And um, you know, King County's talking about doing it other cities and so, and commerce is already doing the work. So that is my big. I guess stump speech on why I think that we should be talking about implementing ten ninety-nine voluntarily. So. I think I hit on all of the questions you answered, and I just wanna take the opportunity, cause I don't know that I'm sure about what your um. Your last date is, but I wanna thank you for all of your work. I've appreciated, you know, your professionalism, Director Kaderman, and all that you've brought to this job and um. Just know that you'll be missed and um, you, you'll be hard to replace. And um, I appreciate you and I appreciate all the work from both Steve and, and Boyd as well. So um. I'll let someone else talk now.
Thank you for that. Thanks for the feedback. Um, that's very helpful. And it just, uh, you're right, there are a lot of resources and we will tap into, to all of those. Uh, there's ten million dollars, as you know, that was set aside for the four counties that are doing their update uh, from, for twenty-four. Um, we will get a portion of that. Uh, they haven't quite figured out the formula yet, so we don't know how much we'll get. Based on past experience, I would guess it's probably less than a hundred thousand. Um, but we'll see. Uh, it's still a nice chunk of change and it will help. There's also seven and a half million dollars. In other grant funds that are available to, to do some of this work and certainly we'll be pursuing that. Uh, as well, we'll look for all those opportunities. There are a lot of resources that are out there and I don't wanna minimize those at all. But I also wanna stress that it still takes uh, some time and effort. To compile those resources to really tailor them to what our local needs are. Um, so there, there will still be a need for resources, whether those are consultant dollars or staff. Um, F T Es or. Um, F T Es or both, some combination of those, uh, but that'll all be part of the budget proposal that we bring you. Um, and thank you for um, for your comments, Councilmember Doer and your kind words. I appreciate that. Uh, you're not quite done with me yet. I will be, I'll be back on May third. I've got another uh, important item. Coming to the council on that date. My last official day with the city is uh, Friday, May thirteenth. But I'll be sort of back and forth actually between. Between Bothell and Bellevue for for a few weeks.
Friday the thirteenth, huh? That's that's an interesting choice, Director.
Thirteen is actually one of my lucky numbers, what can I say? It just happened to work out that way.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh, I'm glad you're gonna be here. Uh, to take, you know, suffer through this one more time. Or in a couple of weeks. Uh, no, thank you for, this is a great presentation. We had the conversation during this one-on-one or one-on-three thing earlier this week. Um, uh, we're very educational, uh, I love it. I will, I have some questions and then I will jump into answers to your questions. If that's okay. And the money requested, it seems like it's like that two point five, three million dollar range. From the from the packet and from the slide you showed, I just estimated there was like a million dollar. I took the max a million dollar and then like eight hundred thousand and there was like a five hundred thousand. Four hundred thousand dollar thing, so I just estimated, so that's for planning only, correct?
The the total of all of that is for uh, planning and public work, so that's a a big portion of that is on the transportation side. Of things and Steve can talk more specifically about that. Um, as far as the planning, the environmental, the public engagement, I I I used a. My estimate is based on what we what we spent in Canyon Park. Uh, that was between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars and that was a pretty extensive uh, effort. Um, because that was a whole new code that went with that. We did a planned action, yeah, yeah, so it was a little more involved. Uh, a little more costly to to go that way, but it was also in the end, because we got appealed. We had an airtight plan and it was and it won on every single count, so we wanna make sure that we do all the necessary work, so. Maybe a little bit high, uh. But but it's gonna take some, you know, some effort as well and that's, like I said, that's our best guess right now. Um, it could go up or down.
I mean, we're talking about three million for a ten-year plan, so I feel like it's not like uh. It's not that high in the grand scheme of things.
It's a twenty-year plan, so it's an even better deal. You can divide the yearly cost in half.
So there you go, it's a dollar a day.
Yeah.
Um, so, okay, that's cool. Uh, you mentioned F T Es and what are the F T Es going to be for? Just curious, I don't know.
Uh, so I know Steve will talk to that as well, so on the planning side, uh, uh, we talked before about an F T E. Um, on the climate change, so would it could support the K four C work as well as develop that climate change element. Um, and then do some additional work on the comprehensive plan. We could also use some additional help on on uh, the housing side. Uh, we've got Arch, but Arch is providing services to fifteen different jurisdictions. So we only get so much of their time, you know, it's very valuable and we we. We we probably get more than our share, actually, we we get, uh, we leverage quite a bit of theirs, but. So I I would, I would anticipate uh, at least one F T E uh, to really devote to the comprehensive plan effort. Uh, whether that's climate change or some other elements, you know, possibly an an F T E and an L T E or something like that. That's just my initial thinking on it, but there's there's more work to be done on that and I know Steve had some some thoughts on transportation as well.
Transportation, um, long-range planning comes out of the capital division. We have fifteen people, including myself. Only one of those is a transportation planner. Um, so in theory, half my time goes to long-range planning, but it has been substantially more over the past few years. Because we've been so regionally involved with transit and Washington. Um, we see upcoming great opportunity for funding if we can be a regional player and participate and apply. Uh, we're also getting funded in uh, as we speak, such as T D M, which I felt from a staffing point of view, we'd probably start a couple of years from now, but. I think we're gonna start this year. So we need some support to be able to actually implement some of these things that we're getting funding for as well as. Um, continue on with our long-range planning, so I'm looking probably for one F T E. Oh, no, thank you. I just wanted to clarify because I wanna, my question here is like, what happens after the. Comp plan, planning is done, you know, like when we have it in twenty twenty four, do those F T Es go away? Or are they gonna stick around to see this implemented? So that was gonna be my follow-up question, so the answer is yes, and yes. Yes, we started with the downtown, we did a canyon park, we're doing our citywide, it it keeps. Growing, which is fantastic. Bothu is just super dynamic. That's awesome, thank you, and uh, I think, uh, let's see, the last question, uh, though. Question part A and maybe question part B. Are we talking about, uh, is this ju- just a the comp planning budget? The the sizing you gave us or is it also for implementation or is it gonna be a separate conversation to? After twenty twenty four, here's how much money we need to to actually make all this stuff happen.
I I would expect that'll be a separate conversation. Once we, once we know more what that implementation will be and that'll that'll come out of the comprehensive plan effort.
And uh, and the mag, the mag, okay, the mag cost magnitude that you gave us does not. Uh, take into consideration that the answers to that questions, you want answers from us, right?
Well, I can only speak to mine, I would say roughly, um, but you know, depending on how. How far you want us to go on some of these, it it could go up a little bit, but I'm hoping it would still be within that range.
Okay, uh, okay, and now to answer your question, thank you. Now to answer your questions, I I also am of the uh. Opinion that for this bullet eight. Not reference single family, I know that the the spirit of the. Uh, that point, uh, it I get it's the character, but I mean, we can probably achieve that, the spirit without having. Caught naming single-family residential as calling that out, right? Because that seems restrictive. Especially with the plans that we wanna go with the missing middle uh, in the future. Um, and as far as the second question is, how much do we wanna do beyond downtown and Canyon Park, right? So that's the second question. Do we wanna do other things? Um, the answer is I uh. In twenty years, I know, I know we're gonna have check-ins every five years or whatever, in twenty years. I have a feeling that we're probably gonna need to talk about other. Uh, areas outside of downtown and Canyon Park. Because of the the strenuous growth of the whole region. So I don't know if we can get some high-level. You know, suggestions, maybe, I don't know, from from me, from from you, from you guys on this. Because I uh, anticipating it's gonna require, we're gonna focus on downtown Canyon Park and before we know it, we need to actually start planning for the other stuff too, so. I feel like we need to start thinking about it right now. What's your, what's your thought?
Well, and that's, that's why we're asking the question uh, and looking at it in this update, because um, I I I think you're absolutely right, Deputy Mayor. Um, even though we can probably accommodate our growth targets between Canyon Park and downtown and just some of the other things that we're doing. Uh, this is an opportunity to really look more closely at those activity centers and decide. Is it time to really look at the the growth of those and the potential that they have and the type of of. More walkable urban um, environment that would, that we may wanna create there as well, particularly on those that are gonna be on those bus. Rapid transit lines and have a stop. You know, that's that's consistent with all the the discussion that we've had about transit-oriented development and where we would want that to occur.
Go ahead, sorry.
I was, I was, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, so I, I think this update is the time to start looking at that and uh. It will revisit it, you know, in five, ten years. We may wanna make some changes, even even more intense development at that time, depending on how the growth is going, like you said. But uh, I I think it's, it's, it's timely now to to really take a a good, close look at those.
So I agree, so there you go, so I think that, and how much do you wanna do with human services? Uh, I agree with uh, Councilmember Doer or and yourself when I said, let's look at the full scope and when you come up with a proposal, we can. Scale back if we need to. Uh, because I do feel like human services needs its own attention. Uh, what's better, you wanna go with uh, climate change? Um, I mean, I like that stump speech. Uh, ten ninety nine, uh, I don't know how it relates. It sounds like it relates to the King County, uh, you know, the C P P that we signed on. K four C and all these things that we signed on to recently. Uh, but what's the, how much overlap is there between all of those? Components, which I am not totally familiar with, like the King Counties and the Homer's County. You know, plans and then you have ten ninety nine, the state plans, are they all in sync or they, are we gonna have? Conflicting things that we have to do at some point.
Uh, I would say they're not in conflict. They're not necessarily aligned in terms of the the level. Of uh, requirements or uh, you know, where the policies go, uh, but I don't, I don't believe they're really in conflict. Um, I I wouldn't be concerned about that as as a planner, I'm not concerned about that aspect.
Okay, I will defer to the, to the experts with this. I'm not gonna provide an answer then. Uh, well, I'll just, my answer is I defer to the experts, which is you all, and the multimodal transportation, that makes total sense. I mean, it's the future, we can, we can only have so much. Driving capa- car capacity, single occupancy vehicle capacity, I mean, so we need to start looking at alternatives.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zornz.
Okay, hopefully I won't uh, drag this out too excessively long. Um. I would like at some point an inventory of. I I I, I think keeping the language of respecting the the quality or the character of single-family residential homes is important. Um. Uh. Especially when we talk about putting uh, duplexes, triplexes into single-family residential homes. I think everybody is on the same place that it's same page that it has to fit in with single-family homes. It has to be, uh, there has to be a continuity of character, so, so if you're. Referring to single-family residential homes, the character of them, keep that language. Um, I would like at some point an inventory, this is if fishes were wishes or wishes were fishes. An inventory of the number, number of single-family homes that we have that sit in HOAs. HOAs, we talked about it um, yesterday, I believe, um, and I think we'd, and it resonated with a conversation I've had before. That HOAs are exempt from things like uh. They can set their own, their own rules as long as it's in agreement with what the state allows, and so. I would like to know what HOAs, um, when we talk about accessibility to housing, uh, forbid renters. Forbid ADUs, um, because that that is not a, that displaces. That is not a continuity throughout the city, so I would like to know. The percentage of homes that sit under HOAs and um, and then take the conversation from from there. Not, not that I, that I, I against autonomy and neighborhoods. You know, I'm totally about character and protecting the autonomy of neighborhoods. But um, I don't want the unintended consequence of HOAs to miss out on things like. An A D U which would fit perfectly in probably most neighborhoods. Um, and then thank you for mentioning trees and the natural environment, um, anything that we can do for uh. Cooling our stormwater, sequestering carbon, keeping our mental health um, solid because we have nature around us. Um, I appreciate. Um, and then uh, D D E I, I I. I would like to know if they, because we know what happened to Georgetown. Georgetown got upzoned and it's a wonderful place to go be, but it moved out a whole population. So I would like to know how D E I could be involved in gentrification. Can it soften the effect of gentrification? I'm thinking in terms of like our older apartment buildings. Um, our mobile, our manufactured home parks. Um, I I would um, really like to see how that um, that D E I piece would fit with gentrification. And then, um. I, down to the questions, there's an end in sight. Um, good bones on number one, the, I think we talked about this before, the the basic plan has good bones, so. Don't, don't reinvent the wheel on it, just tweak it. Um. Absolutely mu- look at other areas, especially when we're talking about creating different um, uh, transit corridors. Going east and west, um, and I think at some point we'll be talking about, are we going to build a bridge? That goes across the slough on East Riverside Drive over to. Oh, I've forgotten what street that is, that Seattle Times building sits on. But from Brickyard. Brickyard, we've had that conversation about at some point, would there be an argument to put a bridge? That would go over the slough to access that part of Bothell, so um, yeah, definitely you um. Look at uh, activity centers around Bothell. I'm gonna suggest that there's separate elements. For uh, number three on human services. Because I can see some of our other um, departments also creating a human services piece. And at some point. We may be, the city may be in a place to create its own human services department. But um, Dev, I would, right now, I would separate that because I think s- human services can be weighted. Um, have certain focusing that that would be more independent of housing. Um, so I would have those, I would have those two separate and I I would also encourage other departments to put human services, tuck those in there. And and see how much um. Um. Activity we give them, uh, ten, ten years down from the road, we may be the, in a position to create a human services department and we'll have. We can just pull that out of um, the existing departments. That's my two bits. Uh, ten ninety nine, I have a question, um, are are certain. Um, I think Steve was mentioning, some, one of you guys was mentioning, um. Being in um, resilient, we don't have to worry about uh. Uh, the ocean rising where we are, but we do have to worry about, worry about slide prone, earth seismic action, liquefaction. Areas here in Bothell, so um. Those pieces that are germane to us, because we do have some of those centers here in Bothell, would that. Our cons, uh, our environmental element, el- and the elements that we have right now. Would those be a a subset of of what we would find in ten ninety nine? Because then I think that's a kind of a moot point. Can we put some of those pieces in? Would they automatically be covered in the uh, menus on ten ninety nine?
I think ten ninety nine goes way beyond what we have currently in our plan. So yes, what we have in the plan could, could be incorporated into a a. A climate change resiliency element.
Okay.
Along the lines of ten ninety nine.
So, so there we go, okay, all right, and then uh, as uh. Somebody mentioned that we need to be able to move freight and goods on our roads. It's not just people. Whoever did that, thank you, because we forget that and um. Uh, being multimodal is great. I would really encourage because nothing is written in stone with transit, we know that. And so whatever resilience that we can build into our roads. Multimodal, allowing for vehicles and other forms of of moving people and freight and goods. Um, is great, so thank you for mentioning freight and goods. Um, multimodal is great as long as we're, um, my impression of multimodal modal is that. There's a flexibility that we build into it on how we use our our roads, so. I think that's the sum total of my answers to your questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
First, I couldn't hear you. It looked like you were muted.
I was using the mute on this thing instead of Zoom and I'm gonna go back.
Okay, too many mute buttons. All right, um, I will answer the questions that have been posed to us. Um, number one, no, I do not believe. like, I do believe that there are some changes needed to the, to the vision, but I, I believe they're minor changes. Um, and, and I look forward to, you know, the opportunity to kind of hash that out with council and, and, and come up with um, something that sounds a little more today. I read this and I very much know what time period it's from. Um, it's pretty clear. Uh, so, yeah. And I'm sure in twenty years from now, they'll look back and be like, oh, you're so cute. You sound like you're from that time period. And that's just how it goes. Um, so, uh, on number two, the, about the primary growth centers, um, I was looking at some, some data from Urban Three and one of the interesting findings that I saw there, besides the like places where you focus on, um, on growth and revenue generating centers, there was always this like, if you had transit going there, you then had, uh, revenue that was generated along the transit line. Um, and so I think that one of the strategies we might be able to use, um, in order to determine which of those, you know, other subareas we might focus on next, is to look at who's along a transit line. Um, how can we then, um, incorporate some of those? I, I liked exactly what you said, Director Hutterman. Um, those sort of walkable ideas. Um, and we know that often mixed use has something to do with that. Um, middle housing, small corner stores, um, just creating little, little like villages that are connected by transit and people can move, uh, between. I, I know that there's been some talk of possibly doing that on Nike Hill. Um, so people don't have to necessarily get stuck, you know, going over the hill and just have something nearby. Um, I, I love little communities like that. Um, wish I had more access to those that didn't involve a steep hill. Um, so I hope that answers the question for number two. Um, next up is human services. Um, so I'm, I serve on the Human Services Committee and one of the, like, we've been talking about how to approach this complex human services milieu, I'll say that we have currently. Um, and I, I just am gonna share this for the community's sake at this point, although, you know, if you're still listening, anybody in the community, like, more power to you. But for posterity's sake, uh, there is a recording and this might be, somebody might be interested at some point. Um, but I'm just gonna list all of the ways that I have been able to determine that we are funding human services. And I hope that will demonstrate why we need to take some more strategic action about that. We have the Center for Human Services Contract. We have the Domestic Violence Advocate. We have Navigators. We have, um, we're in the process of developing an inter-local agreement with the King County Regional Housing Authority. Uh, for homelessness, um, we have the Community Court. We have grants for human services providers. We have the Senior Center and the Food Pantry there. We are, um, looking into developing a Health Through Housing Program, Crisis Resource Center and partnering with Bothell Urban. Um, and, uh, that, and by extension is Habitat for Humanity. That's a lot. It's beautiful, but it's a lot. And they've all been kind of ad hoc, so I very much would like to see a strategic plan developed. And, and figure out how we can get a grant manager to manage all of those grants. And, and, and I do believe that maybe there might be a time when we need to have a separate human services department within the city. But in the meantime, I think we're talking about possibly one staff person um, who could then also help us create a needs assessment, um, and then start implementing, um, you know, based on the data that needs assessment, what are, developing that strategic plan going forward. So with that in mind, I would suggest that maybe our human services coordinator in the future could be housed in community development or in the executive's office, but it definitely shouldn't be our assistant city manager. Um, it's too much role strain, uh, going forward for her to continue, although she's been great. Um, really, really appreciate all of the effort that Becky Range has put into with partnering with our human services organizations and just how responsive she has been, um, to all of the, the needs that have been surfaced throughout the pandemic. So the answer to your question is yes, we should separate it from housing. Um, and those are just some ideas that I have for where it might be housed and what the next directions might be for human services. But I very strongly believe that we need a strategic plan going forward. We need to map the, the community, um, understand needs and make a cohesive, you know, some cohesive decisions that don't, that can prevent inefficiencies and, and duplication of efforts. So I'd like to see that going forward. And that may be beyond the extent of this question, but we do need to have a vision for what, what we're doing with human services going forward. Um, number four. I am sold on Councilmember Doers', uh, vision of ten ninety-nine. Really love that menu idea that there can be kind of a, a mix and match, you know, each, each community, each city can decide on what their priorities are and how they can put that together. Really looking forward to digging into that. And so I very much, um, would like to see us using ten ninety-nine as a template. And last, excuse me, I'm absolutely yes to multimodal transportation. I, I believe that it's been spoken to very eloquently here tonight, so I will just put my support behind that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, could I, uh, offer up just a little bit more information?
Absolutely.
In response to Councilmember Aldrich's, uh, mention of Urban Three and, uh, the Activity Centers. So part of the scope of work for Urban Three is to look at those Activity Centers, uh, specifically Brickyard, Nike Hill, uh, Red Barn and North Creek. So that will be part of their analysis. And I think that'll, that'll give us some sense of just how much additional development we might wanna allocate to those areas.
How much we will need in order to have a solvent city in ten years?
I'll just say congratulations to the council who decided to, uh, do that Urban Three consultancy agreement. Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to that data.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you. And for the sake of time, I'll, I'll keep my stuff brief. I think we have some, I think I've heard a direction already, but, uh, first and foremost, Michael, uh, Steve and Boyd, thank you for the, uh, the presentation. Um, it's not often we get to these late hours and, um, we're thinking clearly about all the things, amazing work that, uh, that we're doing in our community, but you guys, hats off to you guys, uh, for continuing, uh, the, the work that you're doing. Um, number one, um, the vision, I think it's in general, um, direction. Um, making sure that we're being, staying nimble and being nimble, uh, but it does capture a general sense of direction, um, in my opinion. Um, downtown Canyon Park, number two, downtown primary growth centers. Um, yes, uh, we definitely wanna make sure that we're, uh, we're looking at different types in the, into the future and then how, how our community is gonna change, um, and, and what areas, uh, will be changing. So yes, definitely. Um, number three, human services, definitely think that we should, uh, separate that out. Uh, we should be looking at the bigger picture. The needs in our community may be one thing today, but they're gonna change tomorrow. Um, and our community is gonna change, so the diversity, uh, that will be within our community will change as well. So just making sure that we're continuing to understand, uh, what the needs are, um, and being nimble with, with those needs. As far as climate, um, I think it's, we're all kind of in, in alignment on climate and what, what we need to do to make sure that, uh, we stay the course. Um, and that we're, we're being protectors of, of the environment, um, specifically around climate. One, one of the things that comes to mind when we talk about all these different things and ideas, um, and, you know, having a, a blueprint or, or menus that we can choose from, it's making sure we understand those menus and how those menus affect other menus. Um, when we start talking about, uh, electrification and, um, costs of construction and affordable housing and, and how all those kind of play off of one another, it's important for us to understand that while we may make a change in, um, trying to do something better for the environment, how does that affect this unaffordable housing? Uh, when we try to create higher density within our communities, how does that affect transportation within our community? So, um, these things are amazing, the, the strives and the moves and the things that we're doing uh, to create these opportunities, but it's important to understand how these opportunities play off of one another as we, we move forward. So just wanted to make sure that we're at least, we're at least looking at that because I think we're gonna do amazing things into the future. Um, but we are gonna change as a community. Uh, people are gonna move around differently. So that kind of leads into the last, uh, piece for me, which is the multimodal. I think it, uh, again, once again, looking at the different ways to move people, uh, I think it's critical. Uh, but it's also understanding how people, uh, need to be able to move around within our community. It's not just peak hours, um, where we need to move people. It's throughout the day. It's, uh, end of the evening. More people we bring into our community, more families we have in our community, the more needs they're gonna need to have, getting their family members out to plays or whatever they may, maybe doing recitals and things like that. So understanding how we move people around, um, I think is gonna be, is gonna be critical. Um, moving forward in the future, especially as we, we create more density within our community. Um, and hopefully I was quick enough for you. Um, and I gave you good direction.
Yes, you did, Councilmember. Thank you.
All right. It's finally my turn. I don't, I'm not in love with going last, in case anybody didn't realize that already. Um, but thank you to the council for all of their, um, input so far. Um, I would say the vision statement generally cat, I, I, I think you guys got this right. It captures the general direction. There's a lot of good stuff in there, the rhetoric, and there's really solid. In some places, there's some things that other council members have pointed out that I think absolutely don't fit with where we are as a city today. Um, but I, I, I don't think that's gonna be something that we need to spend a ton of time on. Um, in terms of primary growth centers, um, and secondary growth centers, I, I mean, yes, absolutely. I think we need to focus on those secondary growth centers. You know, as has been mentioned a couple times in here, like, uh, you know, the Urban Three data is something I'm really excited about. Um, because I wanna use the comp plan to create a city that can pay for itself down the road. Um, and the trajectory we're going, we don't have that right now. You know, I don't love the idea of permitting development that requires current residents to subsidize new residents. Like, that's not what I'm here for. So I'm pumped to get that and I, uh, I want not just to try to hit our growth targets. I wanna try to house people because we desperately need that regionally. Um, and I wanna do that in a way that makes it better for people who are already live here. I want to have a more sustainable budget, but I also wanna have a more sustainable transportation plan, which I'm gonna get to in a little bit. Um, but you, you know, we have areas in the city that are ripe for more neighbors and more development. And yeah, I wanna, I wanna look at developing those or putting those in that comp plan as well. Um, housing and human services, um, I, I like where the discussion has gone on this, like, you know, let's start off with them separate, see how it goes, see where we end up. And, and if it's too much and we don't wanna spend the money, then, then we don't down the road. Um, climate change and resiliency, I'm sold. Uh, Councilmember slash Rep Doer. I, um, I mean, the big benefit of this is a lot of the work is already done. And there's probably gonna be money from at least the state, if not King County, for us to do the work, a lot of which we wanted to do anyway. So I think just leveraging those outside dollars is, is super important. Oh, one other thing that, uh, I'm gonna back up a little bit that talks about the, uh, growth center areas. I want to look at kind of all the resources that we have in the city to create a more thriving, vibrant, financially sustainable city. Um, and those include those growth centers, but also they include the new BRT lines that are coming in. You know, we have two colleges that are a really great asset to our community that I, I think it's really important that we build around, that we leverage those assets, that we don't just sit here and look at them, that we, we do something to take advantage of the, the really cool and unique opportunities that we have here in Bothell. Transportation element, um, I mean, y'all know what I'm gonna say on this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. The one thing that I would say is, you know, I don't necessarily wanna move away from being vehicular based to multimodal based as much as the way I'd phrase it is, I wanna focus on moving people around as efficiently as possible, both from a cost perspective, from a climate perspective and from a time perspective. And, you know, we've got a really complete network built out in the city for one mode and we got a couple other modes that need to play catch up. Um, and when they do, uh, I think we will all benefit. See. Oh, and I just, Councilmember Aldrich asked, what's the moonshot? And I smiled because I thought that was a great question. You know, big picture, we have some challenges in Bothell. And I am really excited to use the comp plan as a way to address those problems. And I want to think big and I want to do, uh, uh, address the issues that our community has asked us to address and do so without reservation. Um, so I'm, I'm super excited for this process. Um, the, the comp plan really excites me because I'm a huge nerd. Um, and I'm glad we get to see you once more before you're off, Director Cotterman. Um, but yeah, thanks, Steve Boyd. Appreciate you guys and, and your work on this.
Thank you all. This is, uh, this is very good direction, very clear direction and, and extremely helpful. And I also appreciate all of you keeping your excitement in check. So, you know, we, we didn't get out of control talking about the comp plan. But seriously, thank you all very much. This is, this has been, this has been a great discussion, very helpful. Thank you.
All right, before our last agenda item, I wanna take a quick break. It is ten forty-eight right now. We are going to take ten minutes. We will come back at ten fifty-eight or ten minutes from whatever your computer's clock says.
Have to to serve folks across borders. The two primary components of the radar navigator program, one is information sharing, and we do that in the form of something called response plans. And that's a tool that's available to law enforcement officers in the five jurisdictions that provides some information when an officer is going into a situation or a scene with someone that is already known to us that may have an elevated risk of use of force because of a behavioral health condition or developmental disability. And an example of this is one of the early response plans in the city of Shoreline was for a young man with a developmental disability who was large in stature and would approach the Shoreline deputies really quickly for a hug. But it could be perceived as physically threatening. And so it was really important to the deputies that they share that information across colleagues so that when they're entering that situation, they know, okay, this young man might try to hug me. All I have to do is either give him a hug if I'm comfortable or say no hugs today. But I know in the back of my mind that he's not approaching me in a threatening way. And an early study of the radar program did show a reduction in use of force after implementation of the response plans. So that is an important component. And then the other major component of the navigator program is the navigators themselves, the mental health professionals that are currently contractors, but that are going out in the community right now with law enforcement officers. And as I'll talk about shortly here, we're hoping to get to a place where they can go out more independently to do crisis de-escalation, to serve as that social work intervention in the moment. And then also to follow up when an officer encounters someone in the field that they think has kind of an underlying behavioral health or social service need. Just anecdotally, I can tell you that about 25% of navigator time right now is spent on crisis calls and direct response from a 911 call. And about 75% is spent on follow-up. Our funding initially, the program was funded by the King County Sheriff's Office as a risk mitigation grant and the Department of Justice. And then we got this very important funding from King County, the Mental Illness Drug Dependency Levy that funds my position as a program manager, as well as four of our six contracted navigators right now. I'll talk about this more a little later on, but just to put a little note that there is no city funding for this program right now. All five of our radar cities are currently getting this program for free, which is a screamin' deal. But we're gonna talk about where there may be some opportunities for the cities to chip in. We also have some funding through the True Blood Decision from that's through Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. That's known as the Mental Health First Responder Grant. And just recently, we were awarded a grant by the Department of Justice that pays a little bit of navigator time, but mostly is paying for time at Center for Human Services to have a mental health professional there that will receive people that are in crisis. Because a lot of times what we find is that there's this this kind of unbridged gap between the moment of crisis and when a navigator is seeing someone and the first appointment that's available, especially right now. We're looking at weeks-long wait lists, which just doesn't work for people in crisis. So we're super excited to have this kind of immediate one-door access at Center for Human Services for folks in our five cities that are in crisis. I have some numbers from 2021 that I will share with you. You have in your agenda packets the numbers for Bothell specifically. But over the full program of over the five cities, we served 394 individuals in 2021 during a total of 978 encounters. And that's because a lot of times just one intervention doesn't get someone from the point of crisis to the community of care. And our goal is really that we're hooking someone into the full their community, their care system to where they're not going to fall back into crisis and need to call 911 again, or to need the services of a navigator again. Sometimes it's just one intervention, but sometimes just from the numbers, you can see that it takes quite a few follow-ups to make sure that all the pieces are in place for someone to be successful moving forward. I have a little bit of demographic data specifically for Bothell here. We do kind of closely monitor the racial demographics of the folks we're serving. There's a history of diversion programs tending to serve more white people and funnel people of color back into the criminal legal system. And so we want to make sure that we are doing our work in an equitable way and that our numbers reflect the community that we serve. And then also even more reflects the the population that the criminal legal system is touching so that we know that we are an equitable intervention. Of the folks that we served in 2021 in Bothell, 20% reported disabling behavioral health condition. And the way we do that is just that a behavioral health condition is impacting two or more of the domains of daily living. And this is, I want to point out, this is quite a bit lower than last year. And that may be a quirk in the data, but I have a feeling that that reflects the fact that so many people in these trying times are falling into crisis that in the past would not have, or in the past would have been able to manage their mental health conditions without without as much support. And so I think that may be why we're seeing more people and more people with less acute underlying conditions, if that makes sense. About 14% of the folks were experiencing homelessness. And about 40% were linked to the community of care by the interaction with the navigator. I actually am going to share really quickly Q1 numbers for 2022 that are hot off the presses, so not in the PowerPoint. But we served the full program, served 154 people in January, February, and March. And we served 39 people in Bothell. Full program numbers, about 4% of those were veterans and 23% were experiencing homelessness. So just a couple of brand-new, fresh data points for 2022. I have a quick quote here, just kind of emphasizing the value of the type of program that we have. Because the navigator is not a police officer, she was able to approach our neighbor from a different perspective. I simply can't overstate how important the navigator's role has been in our lives. And I just like that. It's kind of hard to get direct quotes from the people that we're working with often because they're in crisis and have a lot going on. But it is often the community, the family members, the caregivers that are also involved and concerned about the person in crisis and working with the navigators. I also want to share something kind of new for our program is that we launched the Community Advisory Board at the beginning of 2022. And that is a group that is made up of people with lived experience, either active or or past with homelessness, behavioral health crisis, or with the crisis system or criminal legal system. And I am really excited and proud about this. First, because I think that just again, for program equity, it's so important to listen to the people that either have been served or are most likely to be served. And I love this quote from the Disability Rights Movement, "Nothing about us without us." And so it's really important to me that as we hope to expand and grow and expand the type of work that we're doing, that we base it on the needs of the people that either have been through this or may in the future and their families and caregivers. And just a couple of early successes. So just in the first few months, we've had members of the Lived Experience Table at our interview panels, so helping us say, is this a person that would interview panels for full-time employees? Is this a person that I would feel comfortable with in crisis? Is this a person that has a demeanor that would would be conducive to de-escalation? That kind of thing. The the Community Advisory Board also created some recommendations that went to the city managers and chiefs about expansion. And they they drilled in on some underlying values that I think are really beautiful. One is community care, something that has come up over and over that our goal is to get people into the community of care and build a community where people don't fall into crisis. Another underlying value is broadening the idea of crisis and de-stigmatizing our language around it. And what that looks like is not just mental health or substance use, but there are a lot of things that can cause someone to fall into crisis and 911 to be called, medical cognitive decline. So really expanding and de-stigmatizing the way we think about the folks that we're serving. And the Community Advisory Board has also decided that they want to convene some community learning around crisis and around what it takes to be a community that supports one another, which I just think is such a beautiful thing and super exciting. Our our second session of that will be about 988, which is the three-digit number that will first start as a suicide helpline in Washington, July 25. And then ultimately, we'll deploy crisis resources. And I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a second. But for the Community Advisory Board, they are really interested in the way that we do crisis as a community and how we can all come together to think it through, to improve it, to learn about the resources that are available. So that's exciting. So I want to talk now about where the radar navigator program is currently, and that I'm gonna go into the vision for the future. So right now, as I talked about, about 25% of navigator time is spent on in-progress calls, the rest on follow-up. Our navigators are all contracted currently. And our coverage for the five cities is limited by our staffing. And we've been challenged over the two years that I've been here to fill our contract positions. We've had unspent contract dollars because it's hard to get mental health professionals to come in and buy their own liability insurance and carry their own business license and not get benefits and then only work 20 hours a week. So we have great contractors, but we haven't been able to fill our positions. And over the course of the last year, I've worked with the the great partners at the city of Bothell and the HR department, the chief, the city manager, and moved to a place where we can now hire full-time employees, which will be, I think, just a critical to expanding the program and to getting great staff in. So we are transitioning this year. We just hired our first full-time navigator, and I put a picture of her. She's already working as a contractor and has accepted a full-time position and will be starting in early May. Out of our three positions we're hiring right now, two are covered by our mid-funds and one by the Bothell Public Safety Levy. And so I want to give some huge appreciation to the city of Bothell and to the council and to the people of Bothell for the the public safety levy, going to a full-time position at a good wage for that position. We are not requiring that the person reach the threshold of being a mental health professional as an equity strategy in hiring. Having these higher requirements for positions can sometimes exclude folks that haven't traditionally had as much access to the higher education system. Our other funders right now are still requiring that their the positions they're paying for be MHPs, but that's something that may change over time. And we're really looking to have our workforce representative of the communities that we serve, specifically the North King County community. And so that qualification question is important. I just put a little, just for a little visual interest, I have a an organization chart where we're moving to the two full-time under mid, which are blue, the Bothell Levy paid full-time employee. And then we do have a half employee under the DOJ grant. That's not out for recruitment yet, but at some point during this year, we'll be able to add that funding to our team. So the future, I'm just going to speak broadly about the vision that we have for the radar navigator program that is is the product of a lot of discussions with the five chiefs and the city managers, the Community Advisory Board, and council, the councils seated over the last two years, some of you that I've talked with, some of the council members at the other cities, that we are looking to a a community in which we have a cadre of skilled compassionate navigators that are able to respond to people in crisis with or without police officers as appropriate, dispatched directly to scenes either by 911 or 988 as it evolves, and also able to do proactive engagement with folks. If we know of someone that is living homeless and is consistently in one place, to go over to the Kenmore Library, you know, and and check in with folks and and move them to the next step in their plan to the to community care. This expansion will require some additional resources. In your budget packet, you have a simplified version of kind of a or in your agenda packet, excuse me, a simplified version of a projected budget for scaling the program and getting to a stage of implementation where we have seven-day-a-week coverage. Initially, seven days a week, probably 12 hours a day, possibly 10 hours a day, depending on when we see the greatest need. And then there's been some discussion at the city of Kirkland, if anyone watched their most recent council meeting, about partnering to do 24/7 coverage. And so that would, that is not considered in the simplified budget that's in your agenda packet, but it is something that has been discussed in the North King County community. We are looking at this seven-day coverage, a hybrid model of co-response, which is when a social worker goes with an officer, and community response, which is a model where social workers are more independent, again, able to respond directly to someone in crisis, connected with 911 and 988, and also able to do outreach where they see a need or where it's someone that they've worked with in the past and they feel like they can take them to the next step toward community engagement. A couple of resource needs that we have are fleet vehicles so that these social workers can go out independently. Right now, all of our outreaches take place in a police car with a law enforcement officer. And so to have fleet would allow the social workers to be more independent. And then I included just a very drafty version of what staffing could look like across our five cities if we had seven full-time navigators, that the yellow bar is Bothell, that Bothell would have a team sighted here five days a week, but then available seven days a week for that full spectrum of time. And that's one of the beauties of sharing the resource is that if you have one to two teams kind of roving the North King County area, they check in at Bothell, you know, that's where they set their coffee cup down, but then they're available across the five cities to either if a law enforcement officer encounters someone in crisis or if they're, if we're doing the independent dispatch, to go where the need is. And then over time, the schedule would be obviously subject to need if there are, if we see that some cities have needs on at different days or times. This is just kind of an, to give you an idea of the kind of coverage that we could get if we expand to what is called Phase Four in the the simplified budget in your packet. And then I want to just speak more generally about what the community could look like in the future if we have a really robust crisis response system. I want to reference SAMSA's model of crisis response. Their best practice model is a three-hub system, which includes a single phone line, and that's 988. We're getting there as a community. Mobile outreach, that's the radar navigator program. And it also includes a place to take people that are in crisis, a crisis triage facility. And so just briefly, want to touch on some advocacy efforts around that. First, I want to thank Chief Suberlich was really the visionary for this. Like a year ago, started saying, hey, we don't have somewhere to take people in crisis. We we could do a crisis triage facility in North King County. And I think it kind of caught fire with the city managers and the and service providers across North King County to say, yeah, we could cite it here. And over the last probably three months, the five cities have worked really hard at bringing in capital funding and talking with King County, which would be the ongoing operations funder. And I included a picture of another of a model in another state because a crisis triage facility could look like anything from a substance use disorder, treat short-term treatment, to what's called a living room model, which is what you see here, where it's really just a place for people in acute crisis to go that's not jail and not not the hospital, to get basic needs met in the immediate term and decompress to where midterm and long-term connections can be made. So the square in your upper right is kind of an idealized version of what our community would look like with the right crisis, behavioral health crisis resources in place. And then I also just threw in a picture of Mayor Thompson presenting to Governor Inslee, who actually heard about these efforts that the five cities were making to cite a crisis triage facility, asked for a meeting. I heard it was his first in-person meeting, which was kind of exciting. Kirkland hosted. The five mayors spoke about this this goal and this dream of having a crisis triage facility cited somewhere up here. And Mayor Thompson spoke about the radar program and that we see it as kind of on the cusp of of real greatness. So his remarks are on the Navigator website, and I think they're really great if anybody wants to check them out. But Governor Inslee was extremely supportive, and it sounded like it would be a pretty close to a slam dunk to get capital funding at some point in the next few years in the state budget. And then King County's Department of Behavioral Health and Recovery is really on board as the operations funder. They've been a really great partner, so that is also super exciting. So in five years, what I see in North King County, and I'm a, I live here, I'm a community member. So what I see for our community is that we have at least one crisis triage facility where people can go when they're in that acute moment of crisis. We have a functioning 988 system that serves us both the suicide helpline and deploys mobile crisis resources. And then we have a web of navigators that are able to respond across North King County when people are in crisis. And our community knows to call 988 instead of 911 when there's a need for a social work intervention and not a either a law and order or a fire intervention. So I think we really, as Mayor Thompson said to the governor, we're on the cusp of something great. And what it's going to take to move the navigator program to that next step of seven-day coverage, kind of wall-to-wall coverage, is city participation, essentially discussing this in the budget process of the five cities. And the analysts at the city of Shoreline did a per capita breakdown of the five radar cities. And just to give you a kind of a back-of-the-napkin idea, if you look at the the potential expansion costs in your agenda packet, the one-time expansion cost, the Bothell per cap contribution would be about $34,000. And for full implementation, what's called Phase Four there, seven days a week, maybe 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., navigator teams available is about $197,000 a year, Bothell's per capita contribution to having a a full and robust crisis network available to our community. So again, to me, it seems like a screamin' deal, and I'm really hopeful that Bothell and the other four cities will consider including radar expansion in their budget discussion process and that we will continue as a community to prioritize community care, as the Community Advisory Board calls it. So that's all I've got for tonight. Hopefully, I didn't talk too fast for 11 p.m., but I would love to take any questions. And I'm always available to provide more information or whatever folks need. But what questions can I answer for now? I'll stop the share so we can see one another.
Councilmember Doer.
I want to know if you watched the entire meeting before you presented. That's my question.
I've been here.
She's like, don't ask me specifics.
Got a lot done.
Yeah, so I I'm sorry that you had to present so late because I'm cranky, I know, and I can't wait to go to sleep. But I'm really excited about this program. I've been there since since the beginning, watching it unfold. And it's really a wonderful thing, and it's a testament to those who have worked on it. And it's a real beacon of light, I think, in difficult times, and especially, you know, through the pandemic. And we we know that mental health crises are are only increasing. And to be able to offer alternatives and not be throwing people in jail for not being able to handle some of life's hardest challenges, I think is is a really great thing. And so I just want to thank you for the presentation and for all of your hard work. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to the navigators too, because they're really the hard-working ones.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brooke. Also, I've seen you in action. You're a navigator too. And so thank you.
From time to time.
You get pulled out there and you go. So yes, thank you very much for this presentation. What I think astounds me most about this is the amount of cooperation and collaboration that we've seen across the jurisdictions between police and mental health providers and Center for Human Services. And it's, this is all just really inspiring. So thank you for for being a part of all of that and pulling it all together. Really excited to see which way things go and to get talking about how how cities are going to be contributing. Because I think we're kind of beyond the pilot of this now, right? Kind of proven effectiveness. We're we're getting to the point of like, let's like, let's keep this around. It's doing awesome things. So how do we make that happen? And how do we help it be as effective as possible? So thank you for all of this work and doing that and showing us the way forward. I have a couple of questions. First is, you said that Center for Human Services are receiving people who need a place to go. And so I'm curious about the locations on that. Are our navigators just going to like the nearest Center for Human Services office? Or is there like one that's sort of cited for the, you know, to be the the receiver of of folks who might need, you know, the temporary place?
So that grant is pretty new, so we have not implemented yet. We don't have, the Shoreline is the fiduciary for that, and the the contract is not yet in place for Center for Human Services. The way that the initial grant looks, it's the Shoreline office. But after seeing Bettina at the council meeting here at Bothell, I would love to explore with them how we can do the this might be too in the weeds, but the contract talks about an individual FTE. And what I've talked about with Center for Human Services is adjusting that so that it can be slices of different FTEs, maybe that do different things. And maybe that looks like at different geographic sites as well. So more to come, but I I see where you're going, and I agree. It should be accessible in multiple locations.
Great, all right. I really appreciate that. A couple more questions. That makes me think of, especially since the sighting of the of the location here in Bothell is so close to Woodinville, it does make me wonder how are conversations going with extending these services to Woodinville and getting a sixth jurisdiction?
So those conversations started about two years ago and kind of paused about a year ago as we started thinking about moving into the offering the full-time positions. But they are very interested, and I think that Woodinville could be folded in pretty easily because we've, we did some initial looking at what they call clearing codes in law enforcement. So what are the types of calls that they're getting in Woodinville? And the numbers of calls that correspond to crises around mental health and homelessness? And the numbers are pretty low. So it seems just like, again, very back-of-the-napkin. But their need would probably be similar to Kenmore's need based on data that we have from Kenmore and from Woodinville. And so it really, as we move into the expansion phase, most likely the next major step would be a new interlocal agreement between the five jurisdictions. And that might be the point in time to say, do we want to consider a sixth jurisdiction for these conversations?
I I think you're right. I think the timing on that would be very appropriate. The next question I'm going to bring up is a little more, I don't know, big picture in a sense of, I've heard from community members that the term behavioral health and developmental disabilities can be a stigmatizing title and that not everybody who is contacted, not everybody who is in crisis even recognizes that that applies to them. And I I am aware of the the social service, like the social science research and why that term is being used, because that's what the researchers are using and all of that. But has there been discussion or any proposals around be finding a more inclusive label for or descriptor for the people that we are able to serve through radar?
Yes, and that is 100% coherent with what the Community Advisory Board is saying, that not every crisis is mental health or substance use. And even saying that is stigmatizing. And just broadly, more broadly, thinking about people that are in crisis, people that need a little something, a little support, a little community care, absolutely in line with that thinking. And where the rub comes sometimes is like funding applications, that kind of thing. Right now, our, one of our funders is the Mental Illness Drug Dependency Levy is our primary funder. And what they fund is behavioral health interventions. So that definitely kind of informs the language around the way our program policy was written. But I think you're absolutely right that to de-stigmatize and to be more inclusive, we need to think more broadly about what crisis is and about the way we speak about it.
Yeah. And then I'm just really grateful that the Community Advisory Board one exists and seems like it's functioning pretty well. And I very much appreciate their recommendation to do some community learning. And I I don't know if you can even get your Community Advisory Board on board with that label in particular. But can there be some education for our entire, for, you know, all of the jurisdictions around, like, what is behavioral health, right? We all have behavior. And some behaviors are more just like more functional. And some behaviors are more, just like more functional and, you know, self-reliant than others. And so I wonder if there is some education that could be done to de-stigmatize even that phrase. Can, can we have a, a more inclusive, you know, like universal humanized idea of behavior? Like behavior and how that impacts our health and how our health impacts our behavior? And so I, I would like to, like I said, it's big picture. And this is like my jam, right? Like I've been in human services and social services for so long. These are the kinds of things I like to think about. But long story short, I believe you're, that there is good work to be done along those lines. And I'm very much looking forward to see what the community advisory board comes up with in such a way that we can really help people know what the program's for, who it can help, and be inclusive in how we describe the people that, that are served. So that takes me to the end of my questions. Thank you so much for being here tonight, for sticking out with us for so long.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brooke, so much. I'm a big fan. And thank you, Chief, for, you know, doing this and Bothell PD. I mean, it's, I feel like it's a great service for our community and it's, you know, a really good response to what we've experienced the past couple of years. And I look forward to helping expand this program further. I wanted to ask about the money aspect of this. You mentioned around 200,000 per year for phase four.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure I heard right.
Yeah, right?
I mean, can we, can we get, I mean, is that all we, like, how long would this, how many years is that going to last? Or until you come back, it's like, we need a million dollars a year.
Well, it, it, with cost of living increases, you know, that could go up over time. But that, if we keep our mid-funding, which I feel pretty comfortable that we will, and it's always helpful to have the voices of local electeds talking to our King County council members that are really control the agenda for that funding. But if we maintain our kind of bedrock funding through the mid levy, that is about four, I think it's four eighty a year, something like that, then that is the per cap contribution for Bothell annually to have, to get us to the seven FTEs. And that the marginal cost is really full-time employees because right now the mid grant is covering me. It's paying for supplies. I mean, our costs are not, we don't have a ton of costs. I just, when I rewrote the budget, wrote in engagement items, so things like granola bars, baby wipes, taxi vouchers. That's a small, and it's a small cost. Our real cost is employees. And right now our secured funding is for two, three full-time with the Bothell Public Safety Levy. And I believe when they did those calculations, I'm not positive, but I believe that they thought about the public safety levy being included as part, Erin knows, as part of that contribution, right? So Bothell's additional cost would be even less than that because there's already this commitment with the public safety levy. So yeah, I mean, it, it just seems so, like so little for what we get as, as sharing it across these five cities. And Kirkland has a larger contribution, obviously, because they're a larger city. Kenmore and Lake Forest Park, I mean, you should see their little contribution with the, the smaller population. And then to just get this awesome value out of it. Yeah.
Great. But so how, you know, for now, there's a half a million from King County, you said, right? And then 200 K for us. And it's, so it's going to be like a one million for the five jurisdictions. So we have half a million for King County and one million from all of us. It's 1.5.
That's right, for the seven FTEs.
For the seven FTEs, but is that, how long are we going to, as the region grows?
Yeah, that's a great question.
I mean, do you have an idea or is like, we'll find out when we get to, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it type thing?
I have two answers for that. One is that we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. And I think we're going to demonstrate so much value that all of, that you and the other councils are going to say, yeah, we want to add another social worker. We want to keep this going. We want to build this. But the other answer to that is that there are other opportunities for, for paying for this, including federal dollars that I, I foresee in four or five years, nine eight eight is going to be the mechanism by which we capture Medicaid and other insurance payers to pay for crisis services for things like mobile outreach. Nine eight eight is going to be the way that individuals are identified and their payer is identified. So part of my job as a program manager is to always be looking at what's the, what are the other payers? What are the other sources that we can expand and meet the need as our community grows? But you know, the other thing is seven FTEs, that's not, that does not meet the crisis need. We know that, right? I mean, common sense tells us that there, we will start serving more people and we will identify more need. And then we, I think as a community, we decide, do we want to continue to put more resources toward this? Are we seeing success? Are we seeing good outcomes? How are we going to bring other sources of revenue in, other grants, other reimbursement? So that's the, that's the second half of the answer, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Citybody who has not yet spoken, have any comments before I go? It doesn't look like it. I'll be quick. Any questions I have answered by everybody else. But Brooke, I just wanted to say thank you because every time you speak to us on this, be it in person, be it over Zoom, your enthusiasm, enthusiasm and love for this just shows like right through, and I really appreciate it. Chief, thank you for your support of this. We appreciate it. And Erin, thank you for being involved in those city manager meetings. I know that you were very involved in all of those, kind of getting this quantum leap proposal figured out. So, so thank you as well. That will not be a feature of your new job. I'm sorry. But I appreciate it while you're in this seat. And no, I'm, I'm just, it's, it's really encouraging when we get to do something that is both so necessary and so cheap. Like the marginal cost, if we have to hire somebody else, it's, I mean, the marginal costs are next to nothing. So I, I couldn't be more enthusiastic about this. Thank you all.
If I may, I'd also like, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for your involvement. I, I'm not going to lie, it feels like I've been pushing a rope for the past five years. And all of a sudden, we got traction in the past 90 days. So I, I'm super excited about that. And to the fact that, you know, having conversations with the governor to talk about, you know, where we're going to store our response plans, for example, that's huge. Talking about building facilities locally to actually take people to. We, we were talking about this last fall at council meetings and how quickly that moved. This program wouldn't be where it is without the support of, you know, you as the mayor, our, our city manager, acting city manager, and the rest of the council members. So this, this is a team effort. So thank you for everybody's involvement on this.
Hey, our pleasure. And it's fun to work as a team when we all do different things and we get stuff done. I'm into it. All right. I think that does it for that agenda item. And up next, by everyone. Not you, councilmembers, because we've got council conversations up next. And would anybody like to speak? Councilmember Aldrich.
Going to report on a field trip today. We decided as a family for spring break to go down to the National Nordic Museum, previously known as the Nordic Heritage Museum. And I was very proud of my 10-year-old who like came over and dragged me by the hand and said, look over here, there's a mention of Bothell in this exhibit. And, and I would have missed it because I was off looking somewhere else. And it's about, so the, the presentation was the oldest functioning sauna in America was built in Bothell. And it is still, like, it was restored a couple of years ago and donated to the museum. But when we talk about Finn Hill, I don't know how many members of our community know that the Finn part is for Finnish, the Finnish people. And so we have Norway Hill and we have the Swedish cemetery. And so when we're talking about, you know, the settling and colonization of, of Bothell, we're talking about, you know, immigrants from the Scandinavian countries. And so I just feel like that could somehow be a part of our, you know, the telling the story of Bothell. Do we even honor, recognize, report, you know, share, display information about our Scandinavian and Nordic, you know, community members and, and people who came before us and, and, you know, just making the city what it is today? So I think that there's a history project there. Would love to see some more information shared on that, either with the, the Heritage Museum here in Bothell too. So historical museum, they're the historical museum. Anyway, so that was just a fun thing I thought I would report on today and I'm looking forward to hear from others.
Councilmember Zions.
Well, I'm thinking of some folks here in Bothell who, my mother-in-law was all Norwegian. And I learned more about Norway than the, than a person would normally expect to learn about Norway. And I, and it, and there comes a lot of, that's something that I learned about folks with a Scandinavian background. They're very proud of it. So, and, and they do live here in Bothell. So I think you just made some fans, Jenny. They have great pastry though, and I'm all about carbs. So.
We also made sure to stop by Larson's Bakery on the way, so.
Oh, my goodness.
We made a day of it.
Yes, yeah, yeah. No, their, their almond ring, top drawer. Walls started going up because I have a bird's eye view on the fire station. I almost had, did a jig on my back deck. So very exciting to see on 42, the walls going up. Concrete's laid, walls are going up. So, any rate. And it is a pleasure to see all the cement trucks that are rolling around town. That means progress is happening, right? So that's a good thing. I wanted to, this, this week to, to bring an unsung hero forward, but it is so stinking late. I am saving it for next week. I just want to wish folks who are recognizing this coming weekend for Passover and Easter, a happy Passover and a happy Easter. And you all stay dry in this crazy weather that we're having. I had the misfortune of walking the dog and about halfway from home, the hail started. So. Everybody stay warm and dry. It looks like winter hasn't given up yet.
All right. Well, it's been fun, everyone. And I'm not seeing any more hands, so I think we are ready to adjourn for the evening. Bye.
Recording stopped.